I'd like to call the order, the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for November 30th, 2020. And starting off tonight, we have a proclamation for World's AIDS Day, and Councilmember Burke is going to read that for us.
Thanks, Councilmember, or Council President. Do we want to do roll call first?
We certainly can.
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mumm.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Whereas COVID-19 has devastated communities worldwide and remained in the spotlight since late last year, we too must not forget about HIV/AIDS, a pandemic that has been raging for about 30 years and remains one of the deadliest infections, diseases in the history. And whereas the city of Spokane recognizes that more than 38 million people living with HIV and AIDS worldwide, and although we have made great strides in the fight against HIV and AIDS, we still have a long way to go in the guaranteeing prevention and treatment for all people and ensuring that everyone has the ability to obtain lifesaving medicines regardless of their economic standing. And whereas Spokane joins other communities in Washington and around the world in this global dedication to educating people about fighting HIV and AIDS, recognizing that as a global community, there will someday be a generation of people living with HIV and AIDS free. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, the mayor of the city of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, does hereby proclaim December 1st, 2020, as World AIDS Day in Spokane, and asks citizens of our community to join me in pledging to help end this pandemic in our lifetime.
All right, thank you. Did we have anyone here to accept that or not? Okay, great. So let's move on to our legislative agenda, and we have one special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C.35988, amending ordinance number C.35857, passed by the City Council December 16, 2019, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2020, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2020, and Providing its Shelter to Effect Immediately Upon Passage and Declared an Emergency in Appropriating Funds in."
Okay.
"General Fund from Undesignated Reserves, $132,000 to allocations operating transfer to intermodal, same amount; and intermodal fund from transfer from general fund, $132,000 to alarm security services, same amount. This action provides additional dollars from the general fund and the amount of $132,000 to the intermodal building repairs and maintenance budget line, providing operating revenue of $132,000 for the remainder of 2020."
All right, we have one community member signed up to testify on this, and that is Nicolette Okultry. And Nicolette, if you would like to hit star three to raise your hand. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hello, Nicolette Okultry here. I just briefly wanted to say that this sort of looks like it's a hidden cost of moving the police precinct, and I'm just curious if $132,000 is needed right now just for the remainder of the year, what the cost is going to be of maintaining that level of security next year, and whether or not that was included in the 2021 budget. So if you guys could look at those things for the community, I'd appreciate that. And one other thing, which is, I'm wondering why we're seeing so many of these blank expenditure control forms like there was on this one. So I'm hoping somebody could enforce the need to actually fill those out completion. Thanks for your time.
All right, thanks you for sharing, and we'll look into that. All right, is there any council commentary on this matter? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's terrible how much money this intermodal center costs us routinely. It's definitely not a great deal that the city signed up for 20-some-odd years ago. But essentially, it's necessary that we spend the money, that we keep it up. We're required to be a landlord and make sure that we're doing our best to well-maintain that building, and so these are expenditures that we have to make. I just hope that we will really think outside the box on this one. When you consider how much a year it costs us, I think it's over $300,000 a year, and we probably still have 20 or 30 years left of this, I think there's some alternatives that we could really, I think, play with. And so I hope that that'll be the route that we pursue. But for today, I support the expenditure even though I don't like it.
Councilmember Mumm.
So I also have a problem spending this money, especially at the end of the year. We could have potentially projected these losses and hate to do this at the end. But we have had a long conversation with Sage Steel with asset management about coming up with some alternatives, looking at what is the forecast. We can't continue to go on year after year and basically lose money on those programs. So we have asked the staff to come back with alternatives and to give the council and the mayor's office a real hard look at this property and what the long-term plans are for it. And I think they're planning to bring that back, I think, to finance, probably sometime in January or February. So we should have some answers then.
Any other council commentary? All right, not seeing any. Let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and that gets us to our first resolution.
Resolution 2020-86, amending the city of Spokane's legislative agenda for the 2021 state legislative session.
And just checking, do we have any commentary on that? No community commentary on that. Does anyone from council have any commentary on that? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm a no vote on this. There's a couple of items in the first year that I don't necessarily agree with, but really, it's more about the second tier and what's there now and what could be there without the potential for council approval. And so my primary reason for voting is just the way it is set up. But there's a few things that I'm not really comfortable with, and I just think we need to have a little bit more conversation around. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Any other council commentary? All right, I just wanted to thank our staff and working closely and giving council members opportunities to suggest changes and go through that process, and our lobbyists, and our council work group, which is chaired by Councilmember Mumm, and Councilmember Burke is on it as well. So thank you. That will go to a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes six to one. And I'm wondering if we could just take the next, there's nothing on the utility ordinances for testimony either, I take it. So maybe we can take, unless someone has an objection, we can take the next two together. They're very similar. Not seeing any. Want to go ahead and read those?
Ordinance C.35962, relating to the rates of wastewater and sewer public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.03.10.04, .10.06, .10.08, .10.10, .10.12, and .10.18, .10.20, and .10.22, to Chapter 13.03, the Spokane Municipal Code repealing section, Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.03, .10.14, and .10.16, and setting an effective date, deferred from November 9, 2020, agenda. Ordinance C.35963, relating to the rates of the Water and Hydroelectric Department and Wastewater Management Department for utility services to properties within designated and established public development authorities, adding a new section, 13.03.10.11, to Spokane Municipal Code Section 13.03, a new sections, 13.04.20.05.1, and .20.06.1, to Spokane's Municipal Code, 13.04, of the Spokane Municipal Code, and setting an effective date, also deferred from November 9, 2020, agenda.
All right, there's no community testimony on this. And just by way of background, we had asked to defer these from the other utility rate-setting ordinances because they dealt with stormwater, and we wanted to hear back from utilities on whether or not they had enough financial capacity to work on planting trees on a pilot project in the city right of way to help reduce the amount of money going through the stormwater system. And we got some good answers from Mr. Simmons and staff, and it didn't require any additional raise in the rates to accomplish that. So that was the delay, and now it's back here. So any other council commentary? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. All right. That brings us to substituted ordinance C.35981, if you'd like to read that.
Ordinance C.35981, expanding the number of authorized golf cart zones in Spokane, amending section 16A.63.01.0, .02.0, and .03.0 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
I don't believe we have any community testimony, but Councilmember Stratton, would you like to tee this up?
So as we've discussed, this is setting up some golf cart zones in, am I echoing?
Not too badly.
Okay. This is setting up golf cart zones in some neighborhoods in Spokane. We did make a change earlier to make sure that the zones are not, the signs need to be up before any zones are open for both use, and that we are establishing this as a two-year pilot project to look at how people are using these zones, and with an emphasis on public safety for those that are driving golf carts and off-road vehicles. We've worked on this for about a year and a half with members from the Centennial Trail Board, with the State Parks, with the neighborhoods, with our park departments, and will continue to look at this. And there may be some areas that we can tweak, but I would appreciate your support. This does have good support in the neighborhood, and this will allow us to move forward and see what this process is going to look like, and we'll keep track of how many people take advantage of their golf carts in these zones.
All right. Did I unmute myself?
I did.
Oh, okay. Okay, any other council member testimony or commentary? All right, I know this is, oh, Councilmember Mumm.
I really appreciate the late amendments that came, have the delay for the signs and the pilot. I think that would be a great opportunity for us to see how this is working because I anticipate if it's working well, there'll be other parts of the city that want to analyze this. I also should disclose that I own property inside one of these zones, and so I need to make sure folks know that as I vote on this, that I am a property owner inside one of the zones. But in this case, I'm not going to be able to support it yet because I don't feel that we have enough safeguards in allowing golf carts, which are really made to be on non-traffic roadways, non-motorized roadways. I just don't feel like we're quite there yet on the safety. I'm happy to work with the team to help tweak this. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Association of Retired Persons put out warnings about using golf carts in regular traffic, particularly concerned about crossing an arterial and not having just one designated place to do that. So I think if this is popular and this is what people want to do, we've got to work toward that to really have the safety there. There's been too many fatalities, too many injuries nationwide for me to support this at this time. So thanks for listening.
All right, let's see. Okay, any other testimony? Seeing.
Council President Beggs.
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm challenged by the safety issues, but I was assured more after it is a two-year pilot program that will give us the opportunity to evaluate really the effectiveness and the safety of these golf carts, golf carts in neighborhoods. I may want one in my neighborhood, but not right now. But if the neighborhoods are invested and committed to this opportunity, then I will listen to the neighbors and support it.
All right. Thank you. Any other commentary? Councilmember Stratton.
I would just be clear that as we go through this, and there was a lot of discussion on speed, so there are speed restrictions. There are also, we've in Kendall Gardens and the Central, there's one area where the golf cart would have to cross an arterial. But for the rest of it, these are not allowed on arterials. So there, you know, we work with the street department very clearly to look at signage and mapping of the zone itself and how to keep people safe. So I just would say that the people that were involved in this discussion a year and a half ago, you know, weighed in very heavily on that. So we'll continue to bring them in to make sure that if there's any changes that we make to the map, if anybody's decided that there's a better way to do this, we're open to make those changes. So safety definitely is something that we spend a lot of time looking at.
All right, any other commentary? All right, I just wanted to give my thanks to council members and staff for working on this. People weren't always on the same page, and I appreciate the collaboration in getting to this point, and the fact that we're going to do a pilot and see how it works. So with that, let's go to a formal roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President is an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes. And I meant to say this at the top of that, but we're gonna do the ordinance C.35982 on sales and use tax for construction of attainable housing. We're going to put that at the end of the agenda because we have a few more things with some staff participation that I want them to get done with. And really, most of the testimony is on that one ordinance. So let's go to C.35987 on parks.
Ordinance C.35987, relating to parks, amending section 12.068.04.0 of the Spokane Municipal Code concerning park rules and regulations.
We don't have any public testimony on that. Councilmember Kinnear, would you like to tee that up? Oh, sorry, there is some, but all right, go ahead and tee it up, and then we'll take some public testimony.
Sure. We have both Garrett Jones and Mary Matsu here to answer questions. This has been quite a process. We've changed it over the course of the four months we've worked on it, so it does not resemble the first draft, Mary, I think, on draft 12 or so at this point. So I'd be glad to turn it over to Garrett if he wants to say anything, or Mary Matsu.
All right. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, I just want to thank Councilmember Kinnear and Council President Beggs for the opportunity to really work with them and to try to find the right language to best accomplish the Parks Department intent. Also Director Garrett Jones, it's been an excellent process. Like Councilmember Kinnear mentioned, we've worked hard to try to find the right language, incorporating a lot of the testimony and suggestions of the community. If any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think we have a good draft that will simply address the issues without going too much further.
I don't know if Garrett Jones, if you want to say anything or not.
Sure, thank you, Council President. Like what Mary and Councilwoman Kinnear said, I would just like to thank all the collaborators, the citizen outreach that we've had on this, the comments, the revisions that we've been able to implement. We as a Parks Division like the proposed amendment to the ordinance because this allows for better communication, coordination, and follow-through afterwards. So again, I'm here to answer any questions on how this will impact the parks, but we're happy to where it sits today. Thank you.
All right, great. And so we do have four people signed up to testify, and it's important for people to be listening on the phone because there is a significant delay on the video. So if you wait to see your name called on the video, we will have moved on to the next person already. So the folks that have signed up to testify on this issue are Rick Biggerstaff, Peyton Smith, Karen Sabanakita, if I get that close to right, and then Nicolette Okultry. So Mr. Biggerstaff, if you want to hit star three and electronically raise your hand. Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Rick Biggerstaff, and I am the Chair of the Brown's Edition Neighborhood Council. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak tonight, by the way. I have two things of you this evening. One is to support the amendment regarding the use of city parks that has been presented to you by Councilmember Kinnear. I ask that you vote yes, and here's why. As you've heard and will likely hear more about, our neighborhood had its challenges this summer while trying to support those who are without homes and food. Data we collected over a four-month period indicated that we were well beyond the carrying capacity of our neighborhood, which resulted in unsafe conditions for those living in and visiting our neighborhood. Our work pointed to issues we were having with outside organizations who were trying to support those in need within and around our neighborhood. Our first response is to learn who these organizations were and to try to coordinate with them to improve what we were dealing with. After hundreds of volunteers' hours and extensive work with these organizations, little was accomplished in improving the situation. We spent day after day picking up garbage, unused food, and needles in our park in our neighborhood at a quantity we have never seen before. Needles should simply not be found in city park playgrounds, and neighborhoods should not be used as recruitment centers for Spokane's homeless population. Although their intent was of value, their execution was unacceptable. I can't help but feel how this may have all worked out for the better had the outside organizations first learned about our neighborhood. Did they know the facilities within our neighborhood that are set up to help those in need? Facilities that the Brown's Edition Neighborhood Council has allocated over $90,000 of CDVG funds in the past decade. Did they know the efforts we have taken to keep our neighborhood clean, to minimize crime, to benefit everyone? The record shows that we care deeply about those in need. Well, what did they know about our neighborhood? It turns out, very little. I asked them. This amendment is not a fix to the problem we are seeing in Spokane as well as around the country. This amendment is the first step which will directly address a significant aspect of what was missing this past year: communication. I see this amendment as a tool to force conversation because they have not shown to happen naturally. Only then can we effectively help those in need. Only then can we be proactive rather than reactive. The second thing I ask of you is that if you oppose this amendment, please do not read a statement you prepared before this public forum. As the city leader, you're not afforded that luxury. Instead, tell us how our concerns that you have heard tonight have impacted you. Tell us what you're going to do to address these concerns that have action at or above that being presented in this amendment. Tell us directly how you plan to support the neighborhoods in helping those in need. Please, please understand that at least one neighborhood has spent several hundred hours in volunteer time just this summer, not admiring the problem, but working on the problem. We need action from you, and we ask you to vote yes. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Biggerstaff, and for doing it under three minutes. I appreciate that. Next, I have Peyton Smith, if you want to hit star three. All right, I'm not seeing Peyton. Let's go to Karen, and I'm probably not getting your last name right, but Sabanakita. Hit star three. All right, yep, okay. Karen, if you could introduce yourself so I'll know how to pronounce your name next time, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you. You said it perfectly. And Peyton Smith is here, too. We had a little trouble with the pound or the star three. I submitted the comments in writing as well, so I will share a shorter version. We witnessed a sudden and overwhelming change in our neighborhood park this summer after their there was unregulated food distribution on a daily and large-volume basis. And immediately associated with that were explosion of illegal overnight camping in the park and a caravan of drug dealers and bike chop-chops were there every evening. And the mess afterwards was really disgusting, and I spoke to neighbors who told me they had stopped using the park entirely because the beauty was destroyed and they didn't feel safe. And as Rick already mentioned, the Neighborhood Council and the Community Oriented Policing Services sponsored a volunteer effort that I was a part of to help to patrol cleanup and report violations. And I think even with the extensive volunteer effort, without the support and resources of Parks and Spokane Police Department, I don't think we would have gotten a handle on it as we did after a couple months. So I really appreciate those resources, but I know that they're scarce, and we just shouldn't create situations that demand that. I would like to say that ultra-unsheltered people have always been part of my neighborhood, but their numbers were small, and the park could still be enjoyed by everyone. And this summer's large-scale feeding programs are what made the difference. They were well-intentioned, but they weren't well-designed. They attracted an ever-growing crowd of more aggressive and more challenged individuals to our park. And it felt to us, and I think the city official had told us that this was a fact, that we were hosting a disproportionate share of the city's homeless in our tiny neighborhood. The cops shop gave us a resource sheet to hand out to people, and I did that routinely, and I did not meet a single person who was willing to use a shelter bed even though there were no barrier beds available at that time. The ordinance won't solve homelessness. That's a very complex problem, and we have a long, mean way to go, but it will help a lot to ensure that people who need food assistance can get it in a dignified and safe way. If I were in a situation where I needed food assistance, I would not have felt safe going to the park to get it. And so I really support this amendment, and I hope you will, too. And I'm going to unmute myself back again, and I hope you'll give Peyton Smith another try. Thank you.
We will. Thank you. So Peyton, if you want to hit star three. All right. Peyton, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Hi. My name is Peyton Smith, and I moved to Spokane about two and a half years ago, decided to retire here. I want to thank the council and Lori Kinnear. I want to thank the Spokane Police Department and the Community Oriented Police and the Park Department and the Neighborhood Council. Because one of the things I did when I moved here is I volunteered for the cops neighborhood center, and we did neighborhood observation patrols, and we provided information and things like that. And when COVID hit, it was a situation where the trash in our neighborhood that we used to pick up, you know, just as we took walks around, became somewhat overwhelming. So the cops shop and the Neighborhood Council sponsored a neighborhood walk program where we wanted, we just thought we'd start off with just picking up trash, helping the Parks Department and keeping our neighborhood look clean. And we decided to keep data on it, and we were blown away with the change in the number. When we did NOPS in the cop shop, we talked to homeless people, and they were part of the neighborhood, and they were, never ran into a problem. But then when there was unfettered feeding in the parks and needle distribution, it changed everything so much. I mean, when I, my brother died of a overdose, and he was homeless for a long time, so I've helped the homeless community. But to see Sunday mornings on walks as the summer progressed, people pass out on the sidewalks, feces, and thank goodness the Park Department now cut bushes and help clean up, this was just unfettered. And I would really like to say that if we need to feed the homeless, but let's do it in a respectful manner. Let's do it where there's handwashing stations, where there's bathrooms, you know, where there's some supervision, and there's not fights, where they're not living in their throw-up and shooting up in bushes with feces. We need to, we need to treat people with more respect than the way it happened this summer, and it was just shocking. And I'm so glad that this community responded so quickly, and Lori Kinnear worked with the city and just started a way to improve it because our neighborhood was being overrun and not in the right way. As Karen said, these were not individuals who cared to go to a shelter, and they were really dominated by drug addicts and people who are mentally challenged, who really needed some social and medical services. So I strongly urge you to pass this ordinance as a first step, and thank you so very much for the opportunity to speak to you. And I did turn in a sheet for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Now Nicolette Okeltree, if you want to hit star three. All right. Nicolette, go ahead and introduce yourself again, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. This is Nicolette Okeltree. Think of the okal as okal and debacle next time.
All right. I'll get it.
Anyway. It's all right. It's all right. Okay. So I hope that this ordinance actually will reduce the cost of cleanup from unpermitted events and reduce the amount of illegal activity. And I hope it doesn't become a way to further criminalize homelessness and make it more difficult for homeless folks to receive services from community-based organizations, especially during the pandemic. After listening to the rest of the commentary from the community tonight, I'm a little bit disheartened because the idea of solving that kind of problem with a law, with an ordinance for which these individuals could be arrested or fined or whatever, doesn't seem to me to really cut at the core of the issue. One of the reasons why there was a rise in homeless folks in that park this summer was because there wasn't a smooth transition from shelters being closed down to new ones being opened up during a pandemic. And this is why these homeowners and, and obviously, like, they have a right to be upset about this happening. However, we need to understand the target of our anger and our frustration in these situations. And I think here it's misplaced to think that new laws could have been enacted and prevented that from happening. It wasn't the fact that there weren't enough ordinances or that the park rules were too loose that caused the influx of homeless folks to the park, but rather the reduction of services on the part of the city. When Cannon was shut down, there wasn't a new space opened back up fast enough for people to relocate to another low-barrier space. So that's why you see this. And then when you have community-based organizations that go out of their way to try to feed or connect other people with services, they're going to do it in the places that they can, they can be. And there aren't a lot of places to be, and there weren't especially at that time during the pandemic. I will note that there's one instance where the police shooed the homeless community out of the park. We saw all live on Facebook, police officers driving their vehicles tearing up the grass from the park, literally moving homeless people out by yelling at them over the PA system. And that didn't show to me kindness. It didn't show to me compassion. It didn't show to me caring for the actual park itself because it damaged the park. You could see their tire marks afterward. I think that it's important for us, again, I've said this kind of thing before, but we've got to, we've got to really look at the disease and try curing the disease and not merely addressing the symptoms. And so while I do approve of this ordinance, and I think it's important to be able to, to make some of these things clear, I do hope we could do things like add more trashcans if it's trashy and there's a trash problem. How do you other garbage go at different parks?
Nicolette, you've come to the end of your time.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, and I'll try to get your name right the next time you testify tonight. Thanks. All right. That brings us to the end of public commentary. Is there council commentary? Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I wanted to thank all the, here, I'm going to turn up my volume so I don't echo. Sorry, everybody. I just wanted to thank all the community members for testifying and for joining us. I miss everybody so much, so thanks for being here. The one I was briefed on this ordinance was that it was an overarching law that would help the parks be more safe. And the way that I'm hearing from the neighborhoods about why we're passing this law is because there is an influx of people who are experiencing homelessness in the park, and it looks like it's directed directly at those folks, which to me makes me think that this is a discriminatory law, not even sure if that's quite legal, to support a law that is based around one group of people. And so I'm really not interested in supporting this by any means. I, you know, Councilmember Kinnear worked really hard on it, and I appreciate the effort. But as Mr. Biggerstaff said, this is not a solution to the problem, and I don't know why we're spending so much time on trying to get people who are experiencing homelessness out of a park when we could be working on real solutions. And Mr. Biggerstaff had mentioned that, well, I never script anything, so you know that this is scripted, but, but he had mentioned that he wanted to hear about the real solutions that we'd like to work on. And a couple of community members have emailed in from the Browns Edition Neighborhood Council concerned about my comments around this policy, and I have written them back a very thoughtful email about the real solutions that I've been trying to work on for the last three years. I've asked the administration, both administrations, multiple times for public restrooms. I've asked Downtown Spokane Partnership for public restrooms, washing stations, and I hope also all of the folks who, who are in support of this ordinance are also signed up for the next ordinance, which is 1590, because that's an actual solution that is going to put money into real housing. And so I hope that you're also there to support that one. But yeah, I mean, there's other cities and other countries around the world who are working on these very issues and have found it very productive to go in a solution-based method and forward-thinking approach rather than a punitive policy that's going to continue to, you know, make people go back to prison and, and get kicked down while they're already down. And by no means, by no means do I want to say that these, you know, folks in the Browns Edition community aren't feeling scared. I'm not trying to take away from that. I definitely empathize with everybody who is feeling the way they're feeling, but it is not a law that I can get behind in terms of supporting just because I, I don't think that we should be passing laws that are discriminatory against people who are unhoused. And that's exactly what this is. That's what we heard from the community members who came to testify tonight. And, you know, if, if any of those community members would like to reach out to me, I'm happy to work with you on some of the solutions that I've been advocating for these past years on council, and I'd love to see a change as well. So thank you.
Other council members? Councilmember Kinnear.
I must be at the end of the line, and you can't see me. Not sure. Garrett Jones is still here with us. I think we're, we're a little confused, and perhaps some of the people who testified a little confused about what this is. And it is not a law aimed at homeless or homelessness. It is something that is aimed at organizers and holding them accountable for cleaning up after themselves, and it's pretty darn simple. So Garrett, could you speak to that? And you, you say it very eloquently. It's about communication with the people who want to reserve space and want to go ahead and have these events, but it's just holding them accountable. So I'm wondering if you could speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, Lori. Absolutely. Yeah, and this isn't even targeted at Porta Lane Park. So, you know, these types of communication gaps happen at Manitow, Comstock, Grant Park, up in Harmon Park, Friendship Park. And what this is geared at is to make sure that it's not about fees, it's not about permit, that if there is an event planned that you do think has some impact, that there is the initial communication what that impact will be. And this includes any type of food distribution. So rather than being reactive, like in some instances where the Parks Department has to come in after the fact to clean up, that we can work with these organizations. You know, if extra trashcans need to be available at a park, we can easily provide that. So it's not targeted for us on the park side to any one group. It is just organizations and events, and this goes from fun runs to, you know, high school reunions to whatever it may be. It just has that initial so they can work with our park operations staff to make sure that they can implement the event successfully, and also it's the best for all users using the park to the benefit as well.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Thank you. I think for me, I mean, what this really comes down to is just simply making our parks safe for families and for the community to, to use them day to day as, as, you know, many, many like to do. And I think really it targets specifically, as was, was mentioned, you know, individuals who are using the parks and not cleaning up after themselves, regardless of, of the use. It could be an event or, or some, or a gathering of some kind, but they're simply not cleaning up and leaving trash and, and things behind. And then there's also a target towards those who want to use our parks simply for drug use and, and, and distribution of drug paraphernalia. And I think, and, and the language has changed quite a bit over many weeks as Councilman Kinnear has worked on this. And I, and I do think personally that there was some previous language that was, that was stronger, and I think it got us a little further of the way in terms of keeping our parks safe and secure. The new language, I don't think quite, is quite as strong. I don't think it quite gets us there. But obviously, you know, like anything, this is all the art of what's possible, and I think the, the compromise that was found is, is what was doable by this council. And, but I do think that, that if enforced, it, it will help so that our officers, if necessary, can make contact with those who are doing things in our parks that they're not supposed to be. And I don't think there's any suggestion that they're simply going to be fining them or hauling them off to jail. I think instead what you'll find, as, as happens often, is our officers will, will use the opportunity to refer them to services and, and get them help and support. And without, I think, tools like this on the books, enabling them to do that work, the, the contacts, the engagement just doesn't happen. And instead, you, you may get other individuals in our parks with nefarious purposes, wanting to spread some of the, the drug material and paraphernalia, and that's not what we want to see. So I think anything that gives us the ability to clean up our parks for the families that feel like they don't have an opportunity to use them anymore, or for the families that are just simply concerned that, that walking through the park is dangerous because there could be needles lying in the grass. And so I think this is really important that we get this addressed, we do the best we can, and if we need to revisit this down the road, then maybe that's something we do. But, but for now, I'll support it. I think these are good changes, and I think it will help improve our parks.
All right. Any other council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Did you call me?
I did. Oh, sorry.
You're unmuted. Let's go to the top.
I, I did call you, Councilmember Wilkerson, but I didn't have my microphone on, so please go ahead.
Thank you. I have heard both sides. I actually, a lot of times live down in Browns Edition. That's where my business is located, and I have utilized Porta Lane Park since 1976. So I have seen it evolve, not only that park, but others in the city. There is a dignity piece to this, and let's not forget with COVID, there was nowhere else to meet, where people could actually gather and be socially distant. We find that challenge today. If I want to meet someone, where do I go to meet or engage on a level? I think for sure the city could do a better job. As Councilmember Burke said, there could be more porta-potties and stations and garbage cans to make it a better place. The park is for everybody, but I will support it because I want it to be safe, but it is for everyone, even the homeless, because they live in this city, too. But I want it to be safe for the children who want to play in that park and for the people who live around any park. But mostly, I want this to enforce, if our police does, the illegal act- But mostly, I want this to enforce, if our police does, the illegal activity that happens where people just parked by the park. So it's not always in the park, they just park at the park. So how we address this from the administration side will be critical and important going forward, but it is a step and it is one tool in our box that we can hopefully affect better change for the neighborhoods.
Other council members?
All right. Not seeing any. I will comment briefly and simply say that I really agree with Councilmember Wilkerson, that parks belong to everybody and everyone needs to keep their behavior standards there for everyone. But I think a lot of times in our city, we don't take care of the problems. And as Councilmember Burke says, not that we created them necessarily, but we don't solve them, and so they show up in a concentrated fashion. And when this, the very first draft of this ordinance, which was just a draft, came out, it did have language that I felt was punitive towards people who were in a bad situation. But in my opinion, that language is gone, and we have gone to what my preference is, which is a harm reduction situation. And the focus of this ordinance is people signing up to use the park. They don't have to pay any money to do it. But in the past, there were only signups if you were using the covered pavilions, which was just a few of them. This basically says if you're going to feed a significant number of people, you just need to sign up so Parks knows they can put the garbage cans out, they can keep track of you if something's going on, and we can just make the situation better, regardless of whether you're feeding people because they're hungry or because you're hosting high school reunion. So it really gets at the problem instead of blaming people. And also, I was happy that it's not criminalizing any, there's no new criminal laws in this. And there's always the challenge of all our laws in the city of whether or not we enforce them and when we enforce them and how do we enforce them and do we do education and services first? All those principles remain in place. So I wanted to commend Councilmember Kinnear and Jacoby Byrd, her legislative assistant, and Mary Marimatsu for just patiently working through all these issues and getting an ordinance that I feel like I can support because it's harm reduction and it's not punitive, in my opinion. So with that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Name.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes, six to one. We're going to do some first reading ordinances before we get to the hearings, and then we'll come back to the housing ordinance.
Ordinance C 35989 relating to the Fire Code, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section
We can't hear Terry anymore.
No. Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'll start over.
Sorry.
Ordinance C 35989 relating to the Fire Code, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section Ordinance C 35990 approving and confirming the 2021 assessments and assessment role for the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area prepared under Ordinance C 35377 as codified and amended in Chapter 4.31(c) Spokane Municipal Code. And Ordinance C 35991 approving and confirming the 2021 assessments and assessment role for the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area prepared under Ordinance C 35377 as codified and amended in Chapter 4.31(c) Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right. Could you read hearings H2A through D?
H2, Hearings on Ordnances Relating to Revisions to the City's Design Standards and Street Development Standards. A, final reading ordinance C 35983 relating to design standards, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17A.020.010.020.020.030.130.160.190.200 of the Spokane Municipal Code. H2B, final reading ordinance C 35984 relating to street development standards for the Unified Development Code, amending Section 17C.200.050.12.01.010.12.02.02.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code. C, final reading ordinance C 35985 relating to design standards, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 17H.01.030.050.060.070.120.140.160.180.190.200.210.220.230.240.250.260 of the Spokane Municipal Code. D, final reading ordinance C 35986 revising the design standards, Chapter 3 Streets, Alleyies and Bike Ways for the City of Spokane, and rescinding the Clear Zone Policy Number 0370-0804, including an appendix F of the design standards.
We don't have any public testimony requested on this. And unless there's objection, I'd love to take a vote on all of them at the same time. We've been briefed, they're mostly technical amendments. Any objection to that? Seeing none, any council commentary? All right. I'll just add special thanks to Inga Note on this. She's been the lead person on that and has done a lot of work on that. We'll go to a formal roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear. Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. Those all pass, seven to zero. And then that brings us back to our last matter of the evening.
Ordinance C 35982 imposing a sales and use tax for the construction, acquisition, and rehabilitation of attainable housing and for housing-related supportive services, and enacting a new Chapter 7.08(c) of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Okay. There was, we passed a substitute version of that at our 3:30 session. And then I'm informed that there is another slight substitute section that would delay this for one quarter and not put it into effect if the city identified and started implementing an alternative funding source of equivalent funds. And I don't know if there was a motion to substitute, make a second substitution of
I'll second that.
Well, you'd have to make the...
I'll make it. There you go.
Okay.
Can somebody please? I missed something. Can somebody explain? So is there a motion to amend?
There's a motion to substitute the new version that has an amendment to Section And I can read that that was distributed. It says, so first, in the title, it adds, it now says imposition of sales and use tax, adds notification to and, and then goes on to the original language, collection by the State Department of Revenue. And then it adds a new paragraph D that says, "The city shall notify the Department of Revenue of the imposition of the tax no sooner than April 1, 2021, and shall only make such notification if the city has not begun collection of an alternative and unrestricted revenue source in a projected amount which is equivalent to the projected revenues authorized by this section." So that's...
And so we can discuss.
Yeah, I would like to know, for whoever submitted that, can I get an explanation so that I understand it? Because I apologize, I did not, I'm just now seeing where this showed up in my email and I haven't seen it.
Councilmembers Mum or Kinnear, would you like to address that?
Well, I think you're probably the best person to address it since you've crashed it.
Okay. So the, what this language does is it does two things. It allows, essentially allows the council and the mayor to work on an alternative revenue source in the same amount that would be looked at to fund the same housing issues. And it gives an extra quarter. So right now, if we were to enact this tonight, this would go into effect, we would be able to notify the state by January 15, which is the deadline to start collecting in April. And this amendment would bump that to notification no sooner than April 1 and time to start collecting in July. But it would not go into effect if the administration and the council were to identify and actually start collecting alternative funds in the same amount as the housing, for the same purpose. So I'm going to go to Councilmember Stratton and then Councilmember Cathcart.
So, I apologize. What if there's no alternative revenue source found?
Then it would notify the state and it would start being collected. So the default would be, it would be, it would be collected unless that alternative source starts being collected before April 1.
Is there a reason why this all came up so late or am I missing something?
Yes, I would just say that we're trying to get enough votes to pass it. And this was a potential compromise language to do that.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to go to...
Thank you for your question.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess, I don't think we have $6 million a year laying under a rock. Otherwise, I'm pretty certain it would have been uncovered by now. So I, it just, I'll be perfectly frank, this just seems like a gimmick to me. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote no because essentially it's still an imposition of a new tax, just delaying it by three months. So I'm not going to support the substitute.
Okay. Other, Councilmember Mum.
So as your Finance Chair, I will tell you, I support this amendment, and I will work diligently with the council and the mayor's staff to find the funding in order to pay for creating opposition in the department. So we have a housing person, the appoint person for this, and that we have an opportunity to find the revenue. There are several sources of revenue sitting out there on the table. We've been discussing them in group meetings and at finance, and it is possible. I do believe it is possible that we can find the funding without having to impose a sales tax. We'd need a few months. Tony Wallace has asked for a few months to put together a program and try to implement it. I think it gives the time for the mayor's office to work with us, to put this together, to find the revenue, so we don't have to impose a sales tax. But this way, the sales tax can be collected. It gives us a little bit of extra time to pull this in. We won't have the answers on some of this revenue for the next several weeks. That's part of the problem. So I think this is a win-win for the city and for the taxpayers. And without it, I'm not sure I can support it. And I feel bad about that because I really believe we can find the revenue within our current income. So, Mr. Cathcart, I hope you do support it because I want to have the chance to at least bring this forward so we don't have to impose a sales tax. And if we can't do it, we can say to the taxpayers and the citizens, we did everything we could. We looked under every couch cushion for the money for this without going to a vote for them. That's what I've heard from folks. They want to vote on it. And this is a tough call for all of us, I understand, but I'd like the opportunity to do it. So I support the amendment.
Councilmember Stratton.
I just have to say one thing, then I'm going to shut up. I just really resent that we're down to the wire because we've got people who are, I'm sure, on the phone wanting to testify, people who have put a lot of work into this. We have had days, weeks to discuss this, to come up with ideas. I resent this, that this is last minute and it puts the, kind of throws the bomb on the whole thing. And if people lose their faith and trust in us, I don't blame them because this is something that should have come up earlier and should have been open and transparent. I mean, I've had everybody talking about, you know, we do forums and are they really open and transparent? Do we really let people speak their mind and make, you know, call in? And this is, this is not the way that it should be done, and I'm not going to support it. And again, I resent how this has been handled. And, Council President, I think you've been strong and noble in this, and I appreciate you explaining it, but this just isn't fair. And it's not fair to the people we're trying to help.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I turned down my volume so I don't echo. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Stratton for her really amazing words on this. I also feel a little bit of pain around this. Councilmember Stratton and Wilkerson and myself have been working on this along with others on the council for many, many months. And to be quite honest, also many, many years, as we asked for this policy to be passed in the legislature, which I had been explicitly clear that if we put it on our legislative agenda, we should be able to pass it because I don't want to go to the legislature and advocate for something that we don't have the votes for. And it's really, it's been a disheartening experience for me as well, kind of similar to what Councilmember Stratton is saying. You know, we finally found a solution, mind you, not the end-all, be-all solution because we know that our tax system in Washington State is regressive, but it is all we have to work with as a city. And other cities have implemented this, even Ellensburg, Vancouver, Seattle. Be it, they did it by a vote of the people, and I was encouraged to do a vote of the people as well. But it came into our lap as now we're sitting here and we're able to vote on this. And as a leader in this community, I am enthusiastically going to support the ordinance, but I am not supportive of this amendment as it stalls the funding, which is going to stall the building. And then it also, really, these last-minute amendments are not something that I'm supportive of and have been vocal about last-minute amendments like this to be somewhat, looks like it's a sly move by the city council because we have the power to do this. And I think that we really need to watch ourselves when we do actions like this because the folks who are calling to testify tonight are calling to testify on the version that they have all seen, which now they're going to be calling in and confused about what they're testifying on because we've changed it last minute. And, yeah, so it's really disheartening to see us go down this path. We've done it before and, you know, I just, these votes are difficult, really hard to do, but when you, when we have these tools and our tool belts, we should be using them as the city council. Thank you.
Any other commentary on the proposed...
You're on mute, Council President, so I'm going to talk.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Okay, there you go. I'm two for two tonight. This is very difficult. The last amendment that... The last amendment that came in to work for additional funding source from our Finance Chair and then to delay this for six months. So, the way I'm understanding this is we give the administration six months to figure out another revenue source for about the same amount of money that we would collect on 1590. If that revenue source is not identified, then 1590 kicks in. Am I pretty close to that one?
It's three months, not six months.
It's three months. Well, three months, okay. So, if in three months you do not identify the other revenue stream, then 1590 kicks in. I know, I understand, uh, Councilmember Stratton, I too, it's like the bottom of the ninth and the last batter is up. However, if this will get us across the finish line to all the folks who are on the phone who have put the work in for 1590, I would strongly encourage us to vote on this substitution because if the money's found, we're good. If not, we've still got 1590 to be able to go forward. I want to just remind everybody, we're talking about a penny on $10. It is regressive, but the opportunity to invest in our community, to invest in the people who live here, to actually have change come about that is sorely needed, will this opportunity come again? I don't know. I'm not optimistic that it will. I would be open, if everybody is, to defer it for a week. I'm open to that, but nope, Councilperson's no. So, I would support it with the amendment that has been recommended by our Finance Chair going forward.
Councilmember Burke.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say something really quickly. I am encouraged by this new form of revenue and also believe that Councilmember Strat- or, uh, Councilmember Mum is going to work diligently to get this funded. But I also want 1590 funding because that means then we have double the money and we can make double the impact. So, putting this amendment on will pigeonhole us to using that extra funding that we might find, which I'm, I'm confident Councilmember Mum will find. She is great at that. And the administration, I'm, I'm hopeful. So, I think that with the budget downfall, we're going to see in these coming years because of COVID, we can use that funding in other sources, you know? And so, such as making sure that our houseless friends actually have a place to go rather than a park, meaning a shelter if it's temporary and then moving on to permanent affordable housing, which we can do with 1590. So, to me, it seems like we need both pockets and our already existing budget as a growing city. So, I just wanted to note that.
Thanks, Councilmember Burke. Any other comments on the motion to substitute? All right. Seeing none, let's take a voice vote. It'll be helpful if I saw your hand on it as well, since it's probably divided. But all those in favor of substituting this version that delays collection for three months and has an al- and doesn't impose it if there's an alternative equivalent source of funds being collected by April 1st, all those in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. And I'm an aye on that. And those who are opposed, nay.
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 Okay. So, it is now substituted by a vote of four to three. And are there any, um, we've had several introductory comments before we get to public comments, but are there any other introductory comments that council members want to say about this ordinance before we start inviting the public? Okay. Not seeing any. And so, again, just a reminder, if you want to testify, please be on the phone because of the video delay. I'm going to read the first three people who will be calling on Rachel Whitaker, John Chatburn, and Amber Johnson. And so, I'll call on Rachel Whitaker. If you could hit star three. All right, Ms. Whitaker, if you'd like to introduce yourself. Oh, before I do that, let me just say this to everybody because we have a lot of people signed up, 39 people. And we are going to have up to three minutes if you need it, but please consider if someone else already made your point, making it easier to hear from everybody. But you can do the three minutes. When you get close to the end of three minutes, I'm going to let you know, probably with about 10 seconds left, to finish up. Not trying to be rude, but I really do need you to finish up so that everyone gets a fair chance who wants to tonight. But hopefully, if you can do it in less than three minutes, that will help people as well. All that said, Ms. Whitaker, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
My name's Rachel Whitaker and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to share tonight. I'm a current partner with Habitat for Humanity, working through my sweat equity hours right now. A little bit about my journey to Habitat as I was married five years ago and within our first year of marriage, we had our first baby. We now have two beautiful kids who are two and fours, if you can imagine what quarantine's been like for us in our small house. But due to issues that arose in my husband's life that required in-depth help, he's been unable to help and work outside of, he's been outside of the home most of our marriage. So, this has left me to be the sole provider for our family. So, being a single mom, trying to balance work, finances, my kids, and everything else in between. When I first got married, I never dreamed that we would have faced the things that we have over the past five years. And prior to starting a family, I was successful in my profession. I came from a very stable background, but over the fast, or the last five years, we lost our home, lived with family, lived with my husband's family and family friends. The first two years of my daughter's life, there was so much instability that was due to circumstances outside of my control. And I just remember being so scared and hopeless and feeling so defeated as we had to pack up and leave our home. At, um, at times, it broke my heart. I felt like the dreams that I had for a home and our family and a sense of security just all faded in those moments. I wanted to give my kids the world and I never thought that I wouldn't be able to. I think that they deserve to have a place to call home, a safe place to grow up and just be ki- be kids. About two years ago, I determined in my heart that I was going to do whatever it took to give them that. I started applying for affordable housing waitlists, which in Spokane can take up to three years. I looked into buying a home, but due to my income, I couldn't afford something that was going to be safe or even desirable for my kids. I felt like I was just hitting wall after wall until I came to Habitat. And it was the first time in a long time that I felt hope and excitement for what the future could hold for my family. Every other route was just looking like years and years before we could have any chance at having a home for my kids. And my kids would be grown by that time. So, it honestly feels a little bit surreal that we're finally so close to being able to have that dream become a reality for our family. Every night before bed, my kids pray that they'll have a house in a heart, or any yard in the slide. And it's something that at this point, I'm going to be able to give them. And to me, that's priceless. If we all just chip in $16, we can make over 2,000 homes for families just like mine. And you really just can't put a price on that. I've shared our experience with many families that are in need and it's given them hope for a future that they didn't even think was possible, just due to facing so much pain and disappointment. And then on a professional level, I work as a supportive housing specialist. So, for the last two years, I've helped low-income families and individuals find housing here in Spokane. And it's incredibly difficult at times just because of lengthy waitlists. And there's just not enough housing options for people to meet the needs of the people. There are families that are no different than yours and mine. Each has a unique story, a series of events that just led them to where they're in need of housing. And everything, I've seen women fleeing domestic violence, elderly people who lost their homes and ended up homeless with nowhere to go. People were serious.
And Rachel, we're coming to the end of your time.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
My time? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so.
So, I just want to vote to pass it.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for so much for sharing your story as well. Next, John Chatburn. If you want to hit star three, followed by Amber Johnson and then Jim Frank, but don't hit star three unless you're John Chatburn. And when you're done talking, please hit star three again, which will lower your hand. All right, Mr. Chatburn, if you want to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Yeah, my name is John Chatburn and I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Community Frameworks. Uh, Community Frameworks has been an active developer of affordable housing in the Spokane community for over 40 years. And our organization is pleased to support additional resources for affordable housing. As developers of affordable housing, we're constantly challenged by competing funding requirements and priorities by different state and federal funders. We think that the best resource, we think that resources such as the housing levy will allow the Spokane community to best determine what kinds of affordable housing make the most sense for our community. These funds will open the door to doing projects that scale better to the community and can be located in more places. Tax credit projects require large scale, lots of units, and this proposed funding source will allow us to develop context-appropriate affordable housing solutions that can be distributed throughout Spokane. Furthermore, one of the great needs in affordable housing is for operations and maintenance funding. Community Frameworks is aware of several projects in our state that have secured the required capital funding to build projects, but they are unable to be constructed because there are no operating funds available. On our Cento Commons project, which began construction today, the single hardest part of the funding was the operations funding, and we see this in nearly all of our projects across the state. It also points to a deeper issue. Ultimately, affordable housing is not about rooftops or doors. It's about lives with whittleness, opportunity, and free from fear. We need to care for the building, but we also need to care for the people living in it by giving them access to resources to chart a different course in their lives. As a member of the affordable housing community, I can affirm, there is more than enough demand for either the housing levy or any other source of funding that the city might come up with. We would be happy to have any resources that you can produce. Thank you for allowing me to share and I encourage your support.
Thanks so much. And again, hit star three, done, to lower your hand. Next, Amber Johnson, if you will punch in star three. Amber's going to be followed by Jim Frank and Jennifer Mesa. All right, Ms. Johnson, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Amber Johnson and I serve as the Director of Mission Support for SNAP. My thoughts tonight are about our clients, as I acknowledge I'm speaking to you from the comfort of my own home. The 150-plus people on the waiting list for a SNAP housing unit know about the housing crisis in a way that most of us cannot relate to. While they wait for a vacancy that may take years to come, they are often doubled up, couch-hopping, living in their vehicle, or in a place that's not accessible for their mobility needs. Study after study has shown us that a stable home has positive impact on our health, the ability for our kids to learn, and for our households to thrive and build assets. Right now in Spokane, there are simply not enough homes to house our neighbors regardless of their income and circumstances. We also know that a home comes in many forms, from shelter and transitional units, market and affordable rentals, condos, single-family homes. All of these are part of a healthy community. We also know that this housing crisis is not impacting all of our neighbors in the same way. Those with limited financial means have very few home ownership opportunities in our current market and cannot afford rent at newly constructed luxury complexes. Our Black, Indigenous, and person of color households are dealing with the impact of decades of systemic oppression due to redlining, predatory lending, and other discriminatory practices. Our most vulnerable neighbors are those most likely to be sitting on a waiting list, waiting desperately for a home of their own. Passing this levy will not solve our housing crisis, but it will allow Spokane to bring on an additional 2,000 units of housing that our neighbors can actually afford. Let's also remember that we need to preserve the affordable housing we currently have through housing counseling, weatherization, and home repair programs. It doesn't matter whether you've just moved to Spokane or have lived here your entire life. If you're a business owner or an employee, if you're a veteran, senior citizen, a young adult, or a single parent, we all deserve a place to call home. And so, on behalf of the nearly 45,000 people that SNAP serves each year, I urge you to support this ordinance and help create new housing opportunities for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Jim Frank, if you want to hit star three, followed by Jennifer Mesa and Katie Shadlock. All right, I'm not seeing you, Mr. Frank. Katie Shadlock, excuse me, Jennifer Mesa, can you go ahead and hit star three? All right. How about Katie Shadlock, followed by Barb Brock and Alex Franz? Again, if you're there, Katie Shadlock, star three. All right. All right. Who's this? Oh.
This is Katie Shadlock.
Yeah, Katie, thanks so much. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Reverend Katie Shadlock and I'm actually on a Zoom call with over 60 people from the Spokane Alliance and other community groups. We're going to try to do a little bit of a shout-out so that you can hear them. They're going to yell hi. Not sure if you were able to hear that.
Yep, we could, we could.
If they're listening and glad to, glad to be with me on this. So, I'm one of the pastors at the West Central Abbey, um, formerly the West Central Episcopal Mission, and I also serve Highland Park United Methodist Church in the East Central Neighborhood. For the last two years, I've been part of community organizing efforts throughout the Spokane Alliance to improve housing access in the West Central Neighborhood. And I urge you to vote yes on this legislation for several reasons. The first is that, as you've heard, waitlists for affordable housing properties in our city are years long, years. At the educational event we hosted with several councilmembers a few weeks ago, Rob McCann of Catholic Charities told us that he can build a whole new building faster than someone on a waitlist can get into housing. And in the meanwhile, what are people supposed to do? As a pastor, my church can offer food, which we do and which we've ramped up during the pandemic. We can offer a kind face, a listening ear, a place to stop and rest for a bit. But without housing, the dignity of people suffers in unspeakable ways. Without housing, people are traumatized by life on the streets. Without housing, there is no stable foundation upon which to build a purposeful, meaningful life. And without public money, we will never be able to build enough affordable housing to meet the demand. I understand that there are concerns that this is not the right time for a tax increase, even one as small as the one that we are considering tonight, to which I would say, yes, I agree, this is not the right time. We should have done this years ago. We should have done this as soon as rents started rising significantly above what someone on minimum wage can meet with a full-time job. We're already so far behind and that's why those waiting lists are years long. And so, I urge you to vote yes tonight to get us on the right path, a path towards a safe, dignified, livable city for all of our residents, including our neighbors with disabilities, our neighbors who are veterans, our neighbors of color who are severely impacted by housing inequalities, our neighbors who have so much to offer our city when their lives are stable and secure. This is only the beginning of more work that we need to do to make our city more affordable and safe for everyone. We need zoning changes and tenant protections, along with more units of housing. But this is a really important beginning. Please vote yes and take a step towards a better future for all of us in Spokane. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Reverend Shadlock. And my understanding is Mr. Frank is now available. If you want to hit star three, Jim Frank. All right. Mr. Frank, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
I'm Jim Frank. Founded Greenstone Corporation and we've been in the homebuilding business in Spokane for over 30 years. And during that time, I spent a lot of effort working with nonprofit housing providers. So, I'm very familiar with the challenges that they face, especially financing. So, I, I support this levy and the opportunity to provide local funding for affordable housing. Most of the money that's available for affordable housing now comes through either the federal government, through the low-income housing tax credit, or through the state housing trust. And both of those sources of money come with unbelievable strings attached that increase the cost of housing. And so, having a local source is very important. And so, having a local source is very important. The other thing, most of the federal and state money is directed towards large apartment projects. And I'd urge you to use this money from this local levy to support homeownership and smaller infill projects and not large apartment projects. And in that regard, I'd like to reiterate what Katie Shedlock says, that this is the beginning of the work that needs to be done, because there's lots of work that needs to be done in terms of code changes and zoning changes that enable us to build affordable housing, small homes on small lots, townhouses, and other types of infill projects. And those barriers need to be removed if this money's going to be effective. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Next up, Barb Brock, if you want to hit star three. Next after Barb is going to be Alex Franz and Myria Megman-Payne. All right, Barb Brock, please introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Barb Brock. Good evening, everyone. I've missed you and hope you're all doing well. Thank you, council members Will Kerson, Stratton, and Burke for introducing a very important and miniscule tax to support affordable housing in Spokane. We need this desperately in Spokane, and it is such a small sacrifice which can bring tremendous cumulative good. As you know, this tax was approved and signed into law in Washington State in March 2020 and allows city councils to put it into effect in their own communities. I am so proud that my city council is taking the lead on this, showing a move towards the greater good. Even if you sincerely hate the idea of an additional tax, this one is different. This tax will be put towards solving an exploding problem all over across America. This small tax will help to solve the shortage of housing instead of reacting to the flood of homelessness, and it will demonstrate that Spokane citizens are working together, not pitted against one another. The tax is one-tenth of a penny on a dollar, which is the equivalent of one-half of a cent for every $5 latte, but the cumulative effect could raise $4,100,000 towards affordable housing in Spokane. I call that a very tiny sacrifice to assist people who cannot afford decent housing. Anyone who watches the slightest bit of news knows that affordable housing in Spokane is incredibly tight and downright impossible for many, and it's only gotten worse during COVID. Please do the right thing, pass the housing levy, and I beg of you to frame it in the form of taking steps to actively address the shortage of housing and helping solve homelessness rather than lighting up the anti-tax mind frame. To quote one of my favorite phrases, "To those to whom much has been given, much is expected." Let's start spreading the wealth around a bit more. Isn't that what Spokane should be remembered for? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. And remember to hit star three as to raise your hand. Alex Franz, if you would like to hit star three to raise your hand, followed by Myria Megman-Payne, and then Anna Trustee. All right. Alex, if you want to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hi, city council members. My name's Chloe, and I'm from the Spokane Alliance. And Alex isn't able to be with us live, but she has a pre-recorded testimony that she'd like me to play for you. Years ago, I decided to leave my partner and thus our three-bedroom home on Broadway. I was working full-time while going to school, and it took us four months to find a new stable home. In short, my kids and I bounced around, housed, and couch dived, essentially homeless. I continued working, took the leave of absence from night school, promising to return if I found childcare and a place to live. I used Craigslist and Zillow, drove around after work. At the time, I made $1,250 an hour, working full-time, making slightly more than minimum wage. We did not have pets. I had fair credit, a clean rental history, yet most places we looked at had a new requirement to make three to four times the rent in a month. Finally, and only through a coworker's referral, we found a place back in West Central, a neighborhood I love, and moved in March 1, 2019. Freshen it was to have my human strength seen and be represented beyond numbers on a paper or in a system. I was so lucky. I had a roof over my head the entire time, a full-time job and a place for my kids to go. The repercussions of going through that trauma have nonetheless only begun to dissolve in the last six months. And I still can't say that I trust people. It hurts every cell in my being to want to believe in my community so much and not quite be able to open up to even build those person-to-person relationships anymore after that, much less lean on someone else or ask for help. I also have not returned to school. I was more than halfway through my program when I left, and I regret that every day. A city without enough safe, dignified, affordable housing sabotages everyone's potential to do best for themselves, for their family, and for their community. We need, we need, we need now to invest in our low-income, working-class families and affordable housing for everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next is Myria Megman-Payne, if you'd like to hit star three, followed by Anna Trustee and Chris Peg. All right, Ms. Megman-Payne, I'm not sure if I was pronouncing your name correctly, but please introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mariah, and I am 29 years old. Three years ago, I was a recovering addict with no direction, nowhere to turn, and nowhere to call home. Each day consisted of chaos and uncertainty. The only thing I had was a will to change. During this time, I was struggling with mental health. I had been to Eastern State Hospital multiple times for drug-induced schizophrenia. I often saw myself in dangerous situations as I had been addicted to drugs and alcohol since I was the age of 13. One day, I decided that I needed help, but I didn't know how to ask for it. I started to go to community court, which is a wonderful program for people with criminal convictions who are in poverty. It was a struggle to find housing at the beginning, but a nice lady named Patty from Transitions at the Women's Heart helped me find housing. After I graduated from community court and outpatient treatment, the Home Yard cottages became my home. Thanks to Patty, I finally had a place of my own to call home. From then on, things in my life got much better. The Home Yard cottages had an onsite case manager for each one of the residents. My case manager helped me find employment at Christ Kitchen, which was, which was the first job that I ever had in my life. I started to have so much more confidence in myself and a higher self-esteem. Now I had my own place and my own job. I was finally feeling secure about being in recovery and changing my life. My case manager continued to work with me and helped me get employment at Safeway. I was working a full-time job, and I loved it. I was able to save up enough money to pay off all of my debt. Since then, I got all of my teeth fixed. I quit smoking cigarettes, and I even lost 50 pounds because I was able to prioritize my health. I have benefited so greatly from affordable housing that I can now afford my own home independently, and me and my amazing husband are expecting our first child. I could not have done it without Transitions and the community's support that they offered. If it weren't for affordable housing programs like Home Yard cottages, I can honestly say I do not know where I would be. Now that I have stability and confidence in my life, I want to go to school to be a social worker. If it were not for affordable housing, I might, may not have even had the confidence to have found employment or to stay sober. I strongly believe that the bill of 1590 would help many people who are currently in my situation, I was, and to transform their lives. I believe that none of this would have happened for me if it were not for affordable housing. I urge you to pass 1590 and to give others in the community the opportunity to rest safely and to improve their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah. All right, next is Anna Trustee, if you want to hit star three, followed by Chris Peg and Shannon Griffiths. It could be Anna Trustee. All right, we're not seeing Ms. Trustee. Chris Peg, oh, wait. Is that you, Ms. Trustee?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, city council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in behalf of the Spokane Latinx survivors of domestic violence and sexual abuse. My name is Anna Trustee, and I'm the program coordinator for MIA, MoHedis in Action, an advocacy organization here in Spokane. One of the many barriers we see to healthy and safe families is the lack of access to affordable and stable housing. Many survivors have chosen to stay with their abusers because of the limited housing options and fear of raising their children in a shelter. 71% of the families we advocate for are of mixed status, where usually the parent is undocumented and their kids are U.S.-born citizens. Because of the many barriers they must overcome, paying their rent is their top priority once they find housing. There is simply too much at stake for them to risk paying late or not submitting a rent payment. Undocumented families often don't feel like they have any rights because of their status and thus the fear of becoming homeless. MIA's housing program called Puerto Seguro provides financial rental assistance to survivors of DV. Our housing advocate works full-time supporting these families, helping them comply with landlord's rental requirements. However, one of the barriers is the lack of housing. That means the federal income guidelines, and the second is the landlord's willingness to rent to undocumented families because they have no credit history. MIA offers higher deposit payments and letters of support for our clients, and that is still ineffective. With a three-year wait and only 1% vacancy rate, undocumented survivors of DV and sexual assault barely stand a chance to live a life free of violence and turmoil. MIA has been working with a client, I will call her Claudia, but that isn't her real name. Claudia has seven kids and two dogs. Our advocates have been working since July to find her a stable home that would comfortably house her and her children. It has been five months, and Claudia and her children have been sleeping on the floor of a cold and unfinished basement. They fled violence in search of a better life, and they now rest their heads on a concrete floor because there's no housing available in Spokane. These are the events that re-traumatize a family and make many rethink leaving an abusive partner. Even though the process of finding a home, even through the process of finding a home, Claudia pleads for us to find a job because her priority is to provide for her family. She worked at a meatpacking facility and can't wait to start working again. These are the stories that we repeatedly see, hard-working immigrants wanting to pursue a life of freedom and happiness, the same values that your ancestors dreamt for you. Domestic violence affects us all. This levy will help house the most vulnerable people and give them a chance to live a life without violence, a life they will then model for their children and in turn create a safer and healthier society for us all. I urge you to pass the levy so that I can fill, so that I can fulfill my commitment to my own children by raising them in one of the most equitable and safe cities in the country. Passing this housing levy alone will not solve the housing crisis. We must have tenant protections through just cause eviction protections that I hope you will enact into law right away as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Yes, Anna, thank you so much. And that will bring us to Chris Peg, if you want to hit star three, followed by Shannon Griffiths and Liv Larson-Andrews. All right. Chris, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
All right, thank you, and good evening. My name's Chris Peg, and I currently serve as a board member for Community Frameworks here in Spokane. I retired and moved here about two years ago after working for over 30 years in the affordable housing industry, over 20 of those as a CEO of two housing authorities in Southwest Washington. I also served as a member of the Governor's Affordable Housing Advisory Board for both Governor Grebwa and Governor Inslee, and was appointed to serve as the Chair of the Department of Commerce Policy Advisory Team, which provides guidance on policies related to the Housing Trust Fund, which is a major source of funding for affordable housing across the state, and it's extremely competitive. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for this housing levy. Throughout my years of work in the development and management of affordable housing, I've seen firsthand the impact of having a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home. I saw it in the face of a little boy asking his single dad of four if their new home would be their quote-unquote "forever home." I saw it in the face of seniors who no longer face the decision between eating, taking their medication, or paying rent. All of us, no matter what we look like or how much money we have, deserve a place to lay our heads at night, to share meals with family, and do homework. The housing crisis we're facing in Spokane means many people don't have access to this basic necessity, forcing many to live on the streets. We're seeing rapidly rising rents and costs to purchase homes while the supply dwindles. Seniors, veterans, and working-class families can't afford to place, to find a place to live in our city. Black, Indigenous, and People of Color neighbors are the most greatly impacted by this crisis. My past experiences in the development of affordable housing have taught me the importance of local support and developing resources to deal with the crisis. We cannot and should not rely solely on state and federal government to create solutions. They expect us to invest in our own solutions, and this is a tool that we can do that with. I'm also pleased to see the project selection committee is made up of neighbors and people who've both been most impacted by this housing crisis, including Black, Indigenous, and People of Color. They know what our community needs. I urge you to pass this levy. This is a flexible funding source that can be used as we decide is the best for the community, and it also will demonstrate our commitment to dealing with the crisis to our funding partners at the state level. I think this is well worth the minimal investment of approximately $16 a year if it ultimately comes to enacting this, the small sales tax. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you so much. And Shannon Griffiths, if you'd like to hit star three, followed by Liv Larson-Andrews and Megan Curran. All right, I'm not seeing Ms. Griffiths. So how about Liv Larson-Andrews, if you'd like to hit star three? All right, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes. And people have been doing a great job, by the way, of being under three minutes.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Pastor Lee. I serve at Salem Lutheran Church in the West Central Neighborhood, and I live in sort of lower Hilliard. I'm calling tonight both as the pastor of Salem Lutheran and as a leader of Spokane Urban Ministries, a decades-long housing ministry that Salem's been engaged in, in West Central, which has provided 47 units of affordable housing through Walnut Corners Apartments, and also as the incubator for Endowment Coffee. And then I want to talk tonight mostly from my experience two winters ago when Salem hosted an emergency warming center for the city of Spokane. And coming out of that experience, that five-month experience, I want to echo my colleague, Katie Shedlock, and I think, I mean, so many testimonies and powerful stories tonight, it is so clear more housing is needed. The vignette that I want to bring to you tonight is that we said yes to the city to host, you know, 60 to 80 people who might need a place to sleep warm and safe at night. There were nights we had up, up to 110 people on our gym floor. Not exactly a humane way to sleep, but again, warm and safe. And I later discovered there were folks, a handful of folks on that floor who were sleeping there with housing vouchers on their person. They had gone through the system, they had done the work, they were getting up to go to work, and there simply were not enough places for them to live at. And so, so I just offer you that reality, and I want to lift up what many other speakers have already raised tonight, that so many months into this pandemic, so many years into a housing crisis in Spokane, you seven council members are guiding a city that is traumatized around this issue. There is deep trauma about the lack of housing, and it's high time to respond. And so, just, I emphasize this well, I'm the pastor of a small church with a small budget, and it's stretched, and there's always the temptation to make ends meet by cutting or by, you know, not investing in something new and daring. But I just want to say that when I watch small, struggling institutions go that route of cutting or not taking a bold step, usually it's those that really suffer hardest and end up not successful. It's the, it's the institutions and even small churches, small cities, who boldly invest, spend, and make a way possible that help people survive and help people flourish. And I have to say, I mean, I drive around the city and I see billboards and social media and things in the paper that say, "We will get through this together." social media and things in the paper that say, "We will get through this together." And I want to say, yes, amen, all the way up, but there's a part of me that says, "Well, show me how. Please show me how." This would be a potent way to say, to make that statement, not just a truism, but a reality. We will come through this together. All the people that are here in Spokane matter and contribute.
Pastor, you've come to the end of your time. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Next is Megan Curran. If you want to hit star three, followed by Jim Dawson and John Chat-- oh, we already had John Chatburn, so Jeff DeBray.
Hello.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Hi, City Council members again. This is Chloe from the Spokane Alliance, and I have one more recording because Megan wasn't able to be with us tonight.
My name is Megan Curran. I'm the Director of Operations at Spokane Falls Recovery Center. I currently live in east-central Spokane, and I'll be moving into Haystack Heights Cohousing in 2021. So, most people, when they meet me, might not guess that I experienced homelessness for seven years. My journey into homelessness was deeply personal, the contributors were complex, but essentially severe PTSD and addiction were catalysts to this.
Right.
That led me from being a student on a nursing path with two jobs to someone who was sleeping on the street in cars in abandoned houses. During those years, I struggled to access resources, and I did not have a personal support system to fall back on. I had a strong desire to change my situation, but I honestly did not know how. Life was a daily struggle to survive. Aged in services throughout those years, like mental health counseling and treatment, but without the key element of safety that a home provides, I got stuck in that continual revolving door of homelessness that Rob McCann spoke so well of tonight, even seeing signs in windows saying, you know, that the waitlist is closed. And what I remember really well at that time is the feeling of always being really cold. That's just a memory that won't leave me. And as the weather is getting colder now, I see our homeless people here in Spokane, and I remember how it felt, to always just wanting to be warm. I was offered a chance to live in Transitions Marion's House, which is a transitional home for homeless women, and Marion's House became my home for the next nine months. And with the support of tremendously caring staff there and the other women around me, I was able to access mental health services and the treatment that I needed while coming home each night to a room that was mine, that was safe, that was warm, and that was familiar. And that allowed me to begin my healing journey. And now, nearly seven years later, I have never returned to a detox, I've never been in an ambulance, and I haven't been back in an ER. And instead, I'm able to give back to this lilac city that gave me so much by working with other women in their recovery journeys, contributing to nonprofits that support homeless women, and being a responsible and productive member of society. It's a path, 1590, to help create more homes where people can find hope and rebuild their lives. It's a solution that works, and it's truly one that our city cannot afford to pass. Because of stable housing here in Spokane, I was able to take back my life, and so let's help others take back theirs by passing 1590 and funding more housing in Spokane. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks for sharing that, Chloe, from Megan. Next, if Jim Dawson wants to hit star three, and then after Mr. Dawson, Jeff DeBray, and then Jeff Thomas. All right, Mr. Dawson, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Jim Dawson, and I'm the Program Director at Fuse Washington here in Spokane. And Fuse, this is one of our highest priorities, to pass this housing levy, because we really believe that it's a great opportunity to make sure that every one of us, no matter what we look like or where we come from, have a safe and affordable place to call home. And I wanted to actually share my perspective in my other part of my life, where I run innovative rental company that provides co-living houses to people at an affordable rate. And also, I'm working to build the first cohousing neighborhood in Spokane and in the inland northwest. And so, I've seen the housing crisis from two different perspectives. One is, over the last seven years that we've been running our business in Spokane, we've seen the level of desperation in people applying for our rooms, which are very affordable, really grow over the last several years. And as we've looked to buy additional homes to renovate and turn into co-living houses, we've seen houses in the same neighborhood, two blocks away from where we bought our first house in 2014 on the Lower South Hill, double in price. Almost exact same house, double in price here in Spokane, making things really difficult to afford and driving this housing crisis. I also, in building a neighborhood with thirty-nine of my friends, have seen how the construction market has changed. And this is why the urgency of doing this ordinance now and starting to build more affordable housing now is so important, because construction prices have skyrocketed. When we first submitted our drawings for an estimate from contractors, we were fifty percent over our budget. We had to cut millions of dollars out of our project and raise prices by ten percent just to meet the current construction market, which has been rated as one of the hottest construction markets and fastest increasing in price in the country consistently here in Spokane. So, the longer that we wait to build affordable housing, the more expensive it becomes, and the fewer houses we'll be able to build with this pot of money. So, I really urge you to pass this ordinance tonight to address this crisis, and really for Spokane to finally confront the legacy of racism that we have in our community through redlining and other discrimination. This affordable local-- sorry, this flexible local source of funding would allow us to fund innovative projects that address the racial wealth gap, and I'm really excited about the elements in the ordinance that really promote equity as well. I will say that when we started to build our cohousing neighborhood, we searched for partners to provide affordable housing units in our building. We weren't able to find any that could meet the rules that exist with federal and state affordable housing dollars. And so, this fund would have been one that we could have used to create innovative, community-oriented, affordable housing in our community.
Mr. Dawson, you're at the end of your time. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. We're gonna-- next is gonna be Jeff DeBray, if you want to hit star three. We're gonna take a break after Mr. DeBray, and I'll announce that when we do. But after the break, Jeff Thomas, Adrian Leithhauser, and Darren Watkins are gonna be up. But Jeff DeBray, if you want to hit star three. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Jeff DeBray, so glad to be here. Thank you for the council for taking the time to hear from the Spokane community and voting on this critical housing levy. I've lived in Spokane for the past seven years, and housing and access to an affordable place to call home is a human right and is one I have felt personally, as have other community members. Growing up in a working-class family in a small town, I remember clearly as an elementary student when the 2008 recession hit. My dad worked in construction, so the financial collapse impacted us especially hard, and we lost our home. In addition to the financial hardship and instability of experiencing homelessness, I can recall feeling embarrassed and afraid to have friends over for fear they would find out about the situation and worrying about how I was going to get my homework done without having access to a computer. It's an experience I would never wish on another child, and one that has carried me in the community organizing nonprofit and services work I do today, fighting for a future where every young person is housed, enfranchised, and has a shot at building a life they can believe in. During my childhood, I had a hard time imagining what my next day would look like, let alone the idea of recording college. Years later, I am a college graduate and a successful young professional in a community I love like Spokane. It's the kind of opportunity and support system all kids deserve, and housing is critical to make that possible. A study last year found over three thousand students in Spokane County were homeless, forty percent of whom were students of color, and frankly, that's unacceptable. One in five members of Spokane are unexpected expense away from being in an emergency situation like homelessness, and that was before the pandemic. Just in the past several years, the cost of housing has increased by forty-five percent, pushing out people who may have already been struggling or many people of color who have been forced into low-quality housing to begin with. And even if folks want to move, there is a three-year waiting list for housing and a 1% vacancy rate, giving landlords all of the power and the people none. Folks in our community are facing expenses on all sides. That must change, and this levy, by investing in building two thousand new homes that folks can actually afford, is not just a step in the right direction, it's mandatory and just the beginning. Thousands of our community members due to the public health and economic crisis face eviction, so we need to also quickly pass tenant eviction protections and change zoning to allow more homes to be built near transit and essential services. I'm hearing the stories of young students and kids of color just trying to pass their classes and build a future, and that starts with reliable and affordable housing. I hope you'll remember that, too, with this vote. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And as I mentioned, we're gonna take a short break of about seven minutes. My clock says eight o'clock, so we'll come back at 8:07. And first up is gonna be Jeff Thomas, then Adrian Leithhauser, and then Darren Watkins. So, we'll be in recess for a few minutes, and we'll see you back at 8:07. All right, welcome back, everyone. And again, we're gonna start with Jeff Thomas. Mr. Thomas, if you want to hit star three, and then Adrian.
Can't hear you, Brian.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. All right, Jeff Thomas, if you want to hit star three. All right, Mr. Thomas-- All right, Mr. Thomas, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
You bet. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on this important topic. I'm Jeff Thomas. I'm CEO of Frontier Behavioral Health. Frontier, as I believe most of you are aware, is the largest provider of behavioral healthcare services in our region, serving more than 7,000 individuals and their families every month and over 20,000 people annually. The population we serve is comprised predominantly of individuals who are socio-economically disadvantaged. Not surprisingly, many of those we serve also struggle with not having stable housing. And without stable housing, it makes the already daunting task of managing one's mental illness that much more difficult, creating a barrier of recovery that, for many, can be insurmountable. Far too often, those we serve in our outpatient programs are unable to find affordable and stable housing, resulting in them being intermittently homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. Far too often, those encountered by our crisis services and our co-responder teams are homeless because they can't afford a place to live. And far too often, individuals completing treatment in our inpatient programs are discharged to homeless shelters because they have nowhere else to go. Having access to stable and affordable housing is absolutely essential for individuals living with mental illness to be able to successfully manage their illness and to be healthy and live safely in their community, in our community. And the additional housing that would be provided through enactment of HB 5090 would absolutely contribute in a significant way to this, which is why I stand in strong support of it. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thomas. Adrian has signed up next, but she hasn't. We're having some challenge in getting her connected, but we'll work on that. Darren Watkins, if you want to hit star three, followed by Kate Bits, and then Dan Sigler. All right, Mr. Watkins, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Darren Watkins here. Hope you can hear me with the Spokane Association of Realtors. I want to thank the council for their efforts tonight. House Bill 1590 was passed with strong support by Washington Realtors with an aim towards creating permanent housing solutions. And for Spokane, this really does the one thing that we need the most. It creates housing that people can own. As we've heard tonight, there's a number of funding sources for housing rentals, but there really is only one measure, the one you are voting on tonight, that helps people get into home ownership. Right now, the Spokane housing, it's at a crisis level. It's far worse than much of the country. We have, when I say record low levels of inventory, in October, there were 424 homes for sale in the entire county. In November, that number is on pace to be even less. We have seen a 25% increase in housing prices in just the last year in the city of Spokane. Record low levels of available rentals and record high rents. Why? We've identified 50,000 people in rentals today in Spokane who are actively trying to buy a home. How many FHA homes are available today under $250,000? There's five. Housing studies show Spokane is underbuilt by some 8,000 homes. The crisis is now promising to grow faster and far greater immediately if we don't do anything. If you'd like to create stable housing costs for people on fixed income, the answer is homeownership. If you want to create lifetime savings opportunities, it's homeownership. And I think right now, the most important step towards true equality in our community, let's create more attainable housing ownership opportunities. Tonight, I couldn't agree more. The measure really is just a start. In fact, tonight, I'd like us to all dedicate ourselves to revitalizing our neighborhoods, where we see homeownership levels below 25%. That's compared to overall about 60% for the rest of Spokane. We'd like to see the money from 1590 used to do things like promote buildings of $200,000 to $250,000 homes or to programs that help people get into those homes. We'd like to see the money aimed at turning our vacant and abandoned homes into ownership opportunities. At last count, there's about 3,000 of them in our community. And if there is a concern for this measure, it's our current economic crisis. The question keeps coming up, is now the right time for a sales tax increase? Well, that's a question for our leaders to answer. Should this measure be successful tonight? We ask. No, we actually implore you, please, live up to the intent of this legislation to find more ways to lead people towards the American dream of homeownership, more opportunities. Make it attainable. You know, it's something we all enjoy, on the council, that is. I mean, take a look around you.
Mr. Watkins, you were at the end of your time, but thank you so much for your testimony and your support for 1590. Really appreciate it. And we're going to go to Kate Bits next, if you can hit star three. And remember, if once you have spoken, to hit star three to lower your hand, that'll make it easier for us on this end. And after Ms. Bits is Dan Sigler, and then Gabby Dixon. Not seeing Kate Bits. Dan Sigler, if you want to hit star three. All right. Do I have, is that Dan on the phone? Oh, Kate?
I think it's me.
Okay, Kate, great to have you. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, City Council President Beggs, and thank you, City Council. I'm testifying to support 1590 and to lift up the issues raised by the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition and the Hispanic Business Professionals Association. Housing equity and housing stability are long-term goals for our community. I'm excited to see how this ordinance can contribute to the ongoing investments we collectively must make in fixing our dysfunctional housing market. I see this ordinance through two lenses. One is personal. I've recently been privileged to move from renting to buying a home myself, a process that took nearly a year as home prices rose and the market got more cutthroat. And I do mean privileged, because I had to leverage generational wealth in order to achieve that. Judging by the way rents and home prices continue to skyrocket, I may have not been able to buy at all if I'd been looking this year. I didn't even realize how much tension I held for years due to my worries about unpredictable rent increases and neglectful landlord and unstable month-to-month tenancy until I got the keys to my own home and could finally relax. Now I know how much I'll be paying for it per month for the foreseeable future. I've even been able to rent out space to two tenants. Homeownership has given me stability and self-determination, which is why I'm urging you to make this option more accessible, especially to Black, Indigenous, and people of color who are often excluded but from the market and are disproportionately likely to be renting. But beyond my own experience as a homeowner and small-scale landlord, I also speak from the standpoint of a trained urban planner who understands all too well how my neighbors are suffering, being blamed and shamed for supposed personal failings as they struggle with problems which are structural, the result of a lack of bold leadership and of our collective lack of will to do better for each other. Tenant protections in our city are so lacking that homeownership seems to be the only way to have a stable life. It's unacceptable that tenant protections have been deferred in the middle of a deadly pandemic, especially because studies now show that evictions are leading to more cases of COVID nationwide, as more households double up and more people are pushed into homelessness. One immediate step that our city could take to protect our community from the pandemic and meet that long-term goal of housing equity would be to make this funding available for rental assistance and to ensure that the implementation committee is composed of community members who are most impacted. Another necessary step, particularly as we look at this amended version of the ordinance, which would lead to delays in implementation, is to finally pass robust protections for tenants like mine. It was pretty hard to write my own leases with just cause protection, which everyone deserves. Thanks again.
Thank you. And Mr. Sigler, I think you already have your hand electronically raised. If you're there, you introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes. And after him is Gabby Dixon.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. This is Dan Sigler, and I'm with Pioneer Human Services. Pioneer, we provide housing treatment and employment for about 500 people per day in Spokane who have been involved in the criminal justice system. And more than 50% of them are also parents, and about half of those living in our housing are also veterans who have not had adequate support in our community. I'd like to speak today in favor of 1590. For many of the people we work with, their primary place of residence for months and sometimes years has been in and out of correctional institutions, jails, or homeless. And as I said, more than 50% have children that have ended up in the foster system when their parents are incarcerated. When they are incarcerated and people are not able to be with their families, they're not earning income to support their families, they're not able to be engaged members of our community, and they're not paying taxes. But taxpayers are still paying for their housing. Taxpayers are paying for the cost of building new prisons and for paying for all the operational costs that go along with that. In state and local correctional institutions, the average cost is $130 per day, equalling about $100 million per year for taxpayers in our community, if you consider both local and state institutions in our region. And the outcomes have been well-established. The more time a person spends incarcerated, the more likely they are to be rearrested and end up back in jail because they've been disconnected from what is most meaningful and important, like family, like finding meaningful employment, and like being connected to community and their faith communities. However, low-income housing with support services provides a contrast to that scenario. As a case study, we Pioneer operate about 160 units of low-income housing, which doesn't even come close to the demand that we have. We have a waiting list of six months to a year long, and often when we get back with people, we find that they are gone, often back in jail for low-level quality-of-life charges or too many failure-to-abure charges. In our housing, we can provide a person housing, treatment, employment, and support in a positive community environment for a tiny fraction of the cost of incarceration, and the outcomes are far, far better. In 2019, we showed that less than 8% of the people living in our housing returned to jail and that their use of emergency services from the city reduced by half in the post-six months after joining our program. People are working, and they're contributing to their rent. They're able to be there for their families. They're paying taxes. But like others you have heard from, we need more of this. There is just not enough room. And where do people go when there's nowhere to go? Often to the streets, and in a perpetual cycle, in and out of jail. When there's not adequate housing and support, the reality is the taxpayers are going to pay either way. They will either pay the enormous cost of incarceration, the foster system, and the societal and generational impacts, or a fraction of the cost that will provide a home in a safe way that is humane, supportive, and engages people back into our community, which is the safest thing that we can do for our community. In light of this, I ask you to support and vote for 1590.
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. Next, Gabby Dixon, if you'd like to hit star three. And Gabby's going to be followed by Patrick McCormick and Larria Shu. Not seeing anything from Gabby Dixon, so Patrick McCormick, if you want to hit star All right, Mr. McCormick, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Pat McCormick, and I teach at Gonzaga University. And I'd like to speak about the need for this levy from a personal experience. In 1960, my father retired from the military, and he and my mother had eight children, six girls and two boys. And they moved to New Jersey, and because my father was able to secure a VA loan, we were able to buy our first home and move into that house. As a result of being able to live in that house and make those mortgage payments, my mother and father were able to put all eight of their children through college, and we were all able to have successful and productive lives. It wasn't until decades later that I came to realize that we only got that loan, in part, because the benefits of the GI Bill were extended to my dad, and we were able to buy a house in Levittown because we were white. If we had been African-Americans, and my father had been a veteran in the military, we would not have been able to secure that home. And as I learned later, white Americans, on average, own their homes at about a 73% rate, whereas African-Americans own homes at about a 43% rate. My life was significantly transformed by the ability to get a government assistance and access to a home in the 1960s. And my family was able to benefit from the rise of financial security and prosperity that many Americans achieved in that generation. But it takes legislation and levies like this to give access to people to fair housing and to housing which will allow us to participate fully in the American dream. Today, we know, particularly in this year, of how unfair our society can be to the poor and to people of color, and that this often happens through no personal fault, but simply because, as other people said, structural flaws and sins in our system. So I'm asking the council to support this levy this evening so that other families will be able to benefit from the government programs that allowed my family to flourish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, Larria Shu, if you want to hit star three. And after Larria will be Edie Rice-Sauer and Ben Stuckert. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Larria Shu, community advocate for the Smith-Barbieri Progressive Fund, a 501(c)(3) that works to build human potential and access to opportunities in the Northwest. Through our grants and activism, the Progressive Fund helps ensure vulnerable residents have access to tools and resources to thrive. We work to eradicate systemic causes that lead to poverty, including unaffordable housing. I'm here today to ask you to pass 1590. Over the past several years, our giving has been continually diverted to meet basic needs. We begin each year with a budget that is focused on giving to nonprofits to assist in growing their power, serving minority populations, and establishing the support they need. Not a week goes by, however, that we don't receive requests for assistance of basic services. Due to the extent of these needs requests, we have spent far less on growing new organizations and far more on attending to shelter, food, and other necessities in the past three years than we have spent over the past 10. For example, this past fall, we facilitated an energy assistance program with Spokane Public Schools. With an $8,000 grant they received from the United Way, we facilitated $100 credit to a Vista Energy account for families from two-area schools. When we began the project, we anticipated the funds would last a month to six weeks as we located those families that needed assistance. Instead, what we experienced was shocking. An announcement email detailed the energy assistance program was sent to families on a Monday morning. Within four hours, all $8,000 was accounted for. The requests for assistance were coming in so quickly that we decided to match the original $8,000 grant in order to serve those who were asking for assistance on the same day of the announcement. That evening, after assisting 160 families, we had to begin turning more families away. It took less than eight hours to utilize $16,000 and $100 credit to families in need. I could also share stories with you of food, clothing, blankets, rental payments, and more that we have provided over and over to organizations in this region. Why? The common theme among these are that we assist is housing insecurity. These families are severely cost-burdened, often paying more than 50% of their income towards housing. In a market where vacancy rates are 1%, families struggle finding affordable housing, many waiting years to receive housing vouchers they desperately need. Notice that I have not once mentioned COVID. We all know that COVID has exacerbated the needs in our community, especially by those who are housing insecure at the beginning of the pandemic. All of the challenges I have spoken of this evening are going to exponentially grow in the coming year. Pandemic-related funding has not done enough to help those in need. The minimal sales tax created by 1590, estimated to impact families at only $25 a year, will not create a burden in itself, nor will it solve our affordable housing crisis. It will, however, be a critical step into creating an opportunity for Spokane to move towards eliminating one of the largest barriers to stability for our families, our children, and our community's healthy future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Edie Rice-Sauer, if you would hit star three, followed by Ben Stuckert and Sarah Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you to the council for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Edie Rice-Sauer. I'm Executive Director at Transitions. I'm also the Chair of the Board of the Spokane Low-Income Housing Consortium. So thanks for this opportunity. Before I go into some prepared remarks about 1590, I wanted to respond to the amendment. I just have to say, if we can find $6 million in the next few months, I'm wondering why we didn't do it a year and a half ago when shelters were so horribly underfunded and we were clawing at dump passes and utility bills for money to keep them running. I'm just very, that's very upsetting to me. Okay, so this past week, I took time off, and I spent it at home with family, and I was warm, and I don't take that for granted. 1590 presents an amazing opportunity for us to start to get a handle on our own housing needs. It's not the total answer, but it's a step towards changing- It's not the total answer, but it's a step towards changing the trajectory that we've been on for some time, and with COVID's impact on the housing market, we need to move quickly. I understand your concerns about the timing, but frankly, as others have said, we're already late. For some time, state and federal funding for affordable housing has been in decline, and changes to the way tax credit projects receive funds means Spokane gets one, yes, one project this year, that's it, from tax credits. I too wish we didn't have a regressive tax system, that's a whole other issue, but we do, and so we have to figure out ways to work within the system we do have, and I think 1590 is one of those ways. It doesn't make me happy that every family will have to pay $25 annually towards affordable housing, but if they don't pay this way, frankly, they pay with their lives, with a lack of opportunity, they pay with substandard housing, inequities in homeownership, they pay by getting stuck in shelters because there's nowhere to go, losing a housing voucher because there aren't units available, and lacking their own tenant protections. They pay in so many other ways that I'm willing to say 1590 is the least of the evils that people have to endure. So given that this is one opportunity, just one, that is already late in coming, even though it's coming at a bad time, please vote for it. We elected you because we trust you as leaders. You know the issue and the environment. I know you do, you've heard it for years. Please move forward boldly. Justice needs this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, it gives me great pleasure to call on Ben Stuckert, former City Council President, if you want to hit star three, and then after Ben is Sarah Clements and Kai Navalah. Go ahead and introduce yourself, Ben. You've got up to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the council for letting me speak tonight in favor of creating a local funding source for low-income housing. My name is Ben Stuckert, and I'm the Executive Director of the Spokane Low-Income Housing Consortium. I formed the first city housing levy work group in 2018. Spokane has a housing crisis and has had a housing crisis, very specifically a low-income housing crisis. Spokane Housing Ventures has a three-year waitlist. Federal and state dollars are decreasing. There is no magic pot of money. In the last few weeks, I've heard that now is not the right time. Wrong. When you have a crisis, the time to be bold and solve the problem is before it gets even worse. When SDA enticed the sales tax by twice this rate, revenue actually went up. It did not slow down the city's growth at all. Now is the time to build more, put people to work, and house people that need shelter. I've also heard that the regressive sales tax concern, every group that signed on to support this also supports a progressive tax structure, but that is not what you are voting on. By voting to solve housing, using the only tool in your toolbox, you are not endorsing the existence of a sales tax. The Low-Income Housing Consortium supports you saying yes tonight, but also endorsed a progressive tax structure at the state level. But by voting no, you are rejecting the only chance we have to build more low-income housing. Your staff is working on a housing plan, but on a factual level, unless there is more local revenue, no low-income housing will be built. Housing is a social determinant of health, and you can do more by voting yes. Housing policy is racism. You can work to fix that by voting yes and prioritizing spending on ownership. We've all had rough conversations about homelessness for years in our community, and you are tired of hearing about it, but it is real, it is getting worse, and voting yes is a partial solution. There are no other solutions except for local dollars to build more housing for low-income folks. Every single housing expert in the United States agrees that subsidy is a necessary part of the solution. A lack of local subsidy equals no low-income housing. A known vote tonight without some other magical solution is a vote that all is well, and that is simply not true. You have the list of over 40 organizations in Spokane that support this. You've received hundreds of emails and phone calls, and this is an easy vote. I have never seen something this meaningful without organized opposition. Everyone you have heard from tonight has been affected by this issue and is in support of you. You have an opportunity, and you have a choice. Vote for a solution or vote no. Please be brave. Collectively combining our resources to offer a roof over someone's head so that they are not in the street is the least we can do for our brothers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Sarah Clements, if you want to hit star three, followed by Kai Navalah and Ryan Louie. All right, Ms. Clements, go ahead and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Sarah Clement Sampson with Providence. I am the Community Health Investment Manager for Washington, Montana, and I would also like to echo Edie's, my dear friend Edie's sentiments about if we can find the $3 million, how do we make this more, because we are far later than we should be. Providence's vision, Help for a Better World, is driven by a belief that health is a human right. Our founding sisters understood better than anyone that housing and health are linked, administered to those in need who are homeless since their earliest days, and that's why Providence continues to invest strategically in community programs and partnerships throughout our service areas, including Spokane. The links between housing and health are clear. Individuals struggling with unsafe or unstable housing experience worse health outcomes and higher healthcare costs for all of us. Evidence is equally strong for the benefits of intervention to promote housing stability. Spending more time in more stable housing and eliminating housing-related stressors leads to improved health and fewer shorter hospitalizations. The correlation between housing and health was made clear to us again in our assessments of the mental health and Medicaid needs of our communities. In both cases, homelessness consistently emerged as a significant underlying issue. We also know that housing instability is not randomly distributed, and some populations are particularly vulnerable. Providence joins with many community partners to support housing and related social services to those experiencing housing instability or homelessness. Providence has made community benefit investments, supporting nonprofits and agencies that are dedicated to giving highly vulnerable people a fresh start, and it's all because we believe that housing is health. Providence is part of a bold national initiative with Catholic charities and local archdioceses to reduce homelessness by 20% by converting available property owned by Catholic organizations into affordable housing units, and by making health and social services available to those in need. This is a community challenge that calls us to participate in new and innovative partnerships and funding sources that offer sustainable solutions. Reducing homelessness is about partnerships and collaboration. To make a lasting impact, nonprofits, for-profits, governments, agencies, and health systems need to work together, and together, we work for a healthier community. Thank you for your consideration of enacting 1590 to support expanding housing options in Spokane.
Thank you. And next, Kai Navalah, if you would like to hit star three, followed by Ryan Louie and Samantha Clark. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kai Navalah, and I currently serve as the Senior Director of Regional Operations for Yakima Valley Farm Workers Clinic. Farm Workers Clinic is one of the largest community health centers in the Northwest, and we operate three sites in Spokane under the unified community health name. Our sites in Spokane serve predominantly the underserved in the community. About 80% of our patients either don't have insurance or are covered through the state Medicaid program. 95% of our patients are at or below 200% of the federal poverty level, and about 20% of our patients need to be served in a language other than what we're speaking tonight, and that's English. Finally, and perhaps more relevant to this conversation, 427 of our patients seen this year so far share that they suffer from some sort of homelessness, which is shocking. Beyond my work at Farm Workers, I also serve on the boards of both Better Health Together and the Spokane Housing Authority, both of which are strongly invested in improving the overall health of our region. It's exciting to see a greater understanding in society that health and housing are interconnected, in that one cannot thrive without the other. It's very difficult for a patient to manage their chronic conditions, particularly those that impact their loved ones as well, without a stable home. This year has challenged us all in many different ways, both in exacerbating the limited supply of affordable housing, but also by forcing many chronic health conditions to go unmanaged. Specifically, we're really struggling to manage our patients' depression and anxiety, diabetes, hypertension, childhood immunizations. All these are concerning, obviously, but without proactive interventions today, they'll worsen as time progresses, unless we invest in improving these today. Farm Workers supports the enactment of this ordinance to support expanding housing options in Spokane. This represents a minimal investment on all of us individually, but collectively, this will help us all make a measurable impact to this concern. It isn't perfect, it's a regressive way to approach this, as both the council and public have already acknowledged. Nonetheless, this is where we're at, and passing this ordinance will help create additional housing for our community. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes on the ordinance before you.
Thank you. Ryan Louie, if you would like to hit star three, followed by Samantha Clark, and then Isaiah Payne. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself, Ryan, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, members of the City Council, for letting me speak tonight. My name is Ryan Louie, my pronouns are "they" and "them." I am the founder of Reimagine Spokane, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Asian-Pacific Islander Coalition and the Hispanic Business and Professional Association. Our communities are well aware of the dire need for affordable housing in Spokane. We also recognize that to tackle it requires solutions that take into consideration the complex housing situations of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, or BIPOC communities. So ordinance 1590 will add to the supply of new housing for our community. It alone will not solve our housing crisis. Though we support ordinance 1590, we propose that the following amendments be included at the time of its passage. Set aside funds from ordinance 1590 for rental assistance. Implementation of a sales tax to raise funds for ordinance 1590 will have a disproportionate impact on low-income households, many of whom are also BIPOC. BIPOC communities are also most likely to be renters and to have been impacted by the downturn in the economy. We are deeply concerned that when the eviction moratorium expires, our communities will be further destabilized by losing their housing. Ensure that BIPOC and queer communities are represented in the committee that will implement the ordinance. Due to the policies like redlining, our communities are underrepresented as homeowners. Rules that come out of the committee must address and resolve the inequities that past policies created. We must be a part of this decision-making process. Decisions impacting us cannot be made without us. The committee implementing the ordinance must have decision-making power. Much like the board for Parks and Recs, this committee should have a budgetary authority to make decisions on which projects will be funded with final approval of the city council. Furthermore, the committee should have a plan on how to do effective community engagement to ensure that diverse voices are heard. One suggestion is to utilize participatory budgeting methodology to engage community members. Set aside funds from ordinance 1590 to assist homeowners with maintaining their homes. Unexpected expenses related to homeownership can create stress for households who may be experiencing financial hardships or who live on fixed incomes. An actual tenant protection ordinance engrosses costs to address the needs of tenants, many of whom are BIPOC. Building affordable housing should go hand-in-hand with tenant protections. Owning a house is not a choice that everyone will make, nor is it an option that will be feasible to all. Tenant protections ensure that those who are renting have the same stability as those who own homes. In conclusion, though owning a home can contribute to building wealth, maintaining a home requires stable employment that pays a living wage. In addition to addressing our housing crisis, we must also focus on economic development that provides opportunities for households to thrive. Incorporating these amendments to ordinance 1590 will allow Spokane to create a comprehensive housing plan that includes the spectrum of housing opportunities for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Samantha Clark, if you want to hit star three, followed by Isaiah Payne and Ryan Keely. All right, Samantha, go ahead and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Samantha Clark, MultiCare Health Systems Director of Programs and Strategic Partnerships for Behavioral Health. MultiCare is proud to be a major employer in our community, employing 3,959 physicians, nurses, social workers, and more, plus Keystone employees like medical assistants, patient navigators, and certified nursing assistants. I'm here tonight to testify to Spokane's growing need for affordable housing and to shed light on its impact to our health system at all income levels. In my role, I have seen the impact of Spokane's lack of housing on our emergency departments, on our hospitals, with our patients, and even our employees. More now than ever, our emergency departments are being used as shelters, as temporary havens, and as respite from the harshness of homelessness. In our hospitals, our social workers and care managers are deeply challenged by finding housing, especially now due to COVID-19's disruption on admissions and capacity of our shelters, skilled nursing facilities, and housing agencies. I have seen how stable housing serves as a primary predictor of access to preventive healthcare, medication adherence, chronic disease management, physical and emotional safety, to stable employment, to the prevention of addiction, the prevention of abuse, and the prevention of violence. And as such, MultiCare recognizes the importance of housing on overall health. This year alone, in 2020, MultiCare provided $500,000 to community agencies in Spokane, many of these dedicated to helping individuals and families stay together, stay safe, and stay housed. And I can tell you with confidence, it is still not enough. I am proud of the amazing healthcare and healing MultiCare provides, and I am proud of the incredible community agencies helping our community members stay housed. However, the impact of COVID-19 and the growing housing prices have painted a clear message. We cannot do this alone. So on behalf of our healthcare system, our community partners, and the individuals living in Spokane, I ask you to support improving access to affordable housing. Help us give the Spokane community a place to heal, a place to be healthy, and a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. And before our next speaker, I just, I had a message that Adrienne Lighthouser, who many of you know, has been watching, and she, the technology wasn't allow her to actually participate, but she wanted to, so she wanted people to know that. Next, Isaiah Payne, if you could hit star three, followed by Ryan Keely and Caitlin Saferd. All right. Mr. Payne, go ahead, you have, introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. My name is Isaiah Payne, the Government Affairs Director for the Spokane Home Builders Association, representing over 750 builders and associated industries in northeast Washington. Certainly, we're encouraged to see the council recognizing the urgent need to create additional housing for our growing community, also affirming the value of homeownership for our community and its many socioeconomic benefits that a number of individuals have talked about already tonight. However, do you think that the council putting a priority on a new sales tax at a time when many in our community have lost their jobs is certainly curious and concerning? I know we saw this last-minute amendment to enable those running for office in the future to claim they didn't vote for a tax increase, but that's exactly what this is. Additionally, these stated goals of increasing available housing and homeownership rates will not be achieved without addressing the costs of construction created by taxes, fees, and open regulation, and by creating incentives for development at a price point that our community can actually afford. Deferring to a subcommittee certainly creates a moving target, difficult to pin down, but I'd like to hear a commitment from council as to how much of the 60% slated for construction will actually go towards building new homes for purchase and affecting the housing supply crisis facing our community. Something like down payment assistance will not affect housing supply and will only serve actually to drive up home prices, the opposite of what we all agree must be done. I sincerely hope the council will focus on actions that will provide housing options for hard-working Spokaneites. We currently see a $150,000 gap between the median income individual and what they can afford and what median new home construction actually costs. Until we know exactly what the ordinance will accomplish and have certainty that it can achieve its agreed-upon goals, it's certainly difficult to understand an affirmative vote, but we certainly do hope that should this ordinance pass, we will see results and solutions that are oriented towards increasing homeownership at that stated value, and as well, really addressing the inventory and housing supply crisis that our community has. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Keely, if I'm getting that pronunciation right, if you want to hit star three. All right, Ryan, if you'd like to introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Ryan Keely with Excelsior. I'm the Executive Vice President, and at Excelsior, we have, we set the nexus of multiple public systems. We have education, primary care, behavioral health, we're the second-largest behavioral health provider of inpatient and outpatient services for youth and families. And across that continuum of services, if housing, if stable, access to stable and affordable housing is not there, it's very difficult to meet any of the family's wellness and health goals, or education goals. If someone doesn't have a place to sleep at night, they're not able to complete homework, they're not able to take their diabetes medicine, they're certainly not able to work on their depression and anxiety to the degree that they could if they had stable housing. We've also noticed that this is one of the We've also noticed that this is one of the least expensive things in our healthcare system. Overutilization of emergency departments, of criminal justice system, costs far more than what we can put towards housing in a meaningful way. And so Excelsior unequivocally supports this ordinance and hopes that you enact it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Caitlin Safford, if you would like to hit star three, followed by Michelle Pappas and Liz Moore. Caitlin, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, all. My name is Caitlin Safford, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for AmeriGroup Washington. And we're one of the Medicaid health plans that support Medicaid enrollees in the Spokane region. And it's late, so I just want to make this very quick. We undoubtedly support the interconnection between health and housing. We really do appreciate the Spokane City Council even considering it an ordinance like this. Even though a tax burden is a burden on all income levels, we do believe that this particular type of tax does allow for more local control and local decision-making around how tax benefits are actually spent in the community to support better housing options in the future. And that's all I'd like to say today. We do support this ordinance, so thank you for considering it.
Thanks so much. And for those of you who are wondering, we have five more public speakers, and the first of which is Michelle Pappas, if you'd like to hit star three, followed by Liz Moore and Nicolette Ockletree. Go ahead, Michelle, and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hello, and thank you, City Council members. My name is Michelle Pappas. I am a disabled resident of Spokane, and I work at the Disability Action Center, a center for independence. I am speaking to urge you to pass this housing levy. Today, a young man tried to find shelter in Spokane. He was fleeing domestic violence at the very home he had fled to escape a previous domestic violence situation. This story is not uncommon. In my job as a disability advocate, I often help vulnerable people in dangerous situations find housing. The hardest part of my job has become telling disabled people that there is a three-year wait list for affordable housing. When someone loses their personal community, the local community should be able to step up and provide the services to care for the individual, but we have not done that. People with disabilities often find themselves homeless, sharing a small home with several adults or institutionalized. Society has often shrugged off the housing needs of this community as a moral failing of the disabled, rather than adequately funding housing for this vulnerable population. Historically, we have been hidden away in an institution or they have tried to force our services outside of city limits. Tonight, I urge the City Council to recognize the history of prejudice and discrimination toward our disabled population and move forward with a passing vote for tonight's ordinance so we can begin to recognize the needs of the disabled population. Furthermore, we cannot dismiss disabled people for needing housing by saying that they will live with their parents when they need to. Well, what happens after their parents die? Do we send them to an institution? I seek here tonight to advocate that institutions do not qualify as housing and that individuals have a civil right to live in the neighborhood of their choice. Please also keep in mind that mental and behavioral health-related facilities, while necessary, do not take the place of affordable, accessible housing. So where do we live when there is no option but to live on SSI? Where do we live when we make minimum wage or worse, a subminimum wage? Where do we go to buy a house for our families in a market that already has a competitive 1% vacancy rate? We may have the right to live in society, but where will we be able to sleep, put down roots, and make memories if the housing does not exist? What happened to the young man I spoke with today who walked through multiple homeless shelters in the snow during a pandemic? This ordinance will not keep him in a safe, warm bed tonight, but it will increase the access to affordable housing in Spokane that we so desperately need. I urge you to vote yes and act now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz Moore, if you'd like to hit star three, followed by Nicolette Ockletree and Tom Hormel. All right, Ms. Moore, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes. We're not hearing you. Liz?
How about now? Yes?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. This is Liz Moore, and I'm the Director of the Peace and Justice Action League of Spokane. But on a personal level, I want to say that affordable housing made a life-altering difference for me at two times of major life changes, when housing security was one of the few certainties that I could rely on. And in both cases, my ability to access secure, affordable housing was a direct consequence of my white immigrant settler family being given access to stolen native land, which has literally meant housing security for six generations. Housing security and affordability is an economic and racial justice issue. Everyone deserves housing. And so I'm testifying on behalf of the Peace and Justice Action League of Spokane in support of the housing levy, as well as in support of the amendments to the housing levy, which the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition Spokane chapter and the Hispanic Business Professional Association outlined in their communication to you earlier today. And echoing Ryan Louie's testimony this evening, ordinance 1590 is a critical investment to add to the supply of new housing for our community, but it alone will not solve our housing crisis. Effectively tackling the dire need for affordable housing in Spokane requires addressing the complex housing situations of Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities and protecting the rights and well-being of tenants. So CAGA supports these amendments, which APIC Spokane and HBPA are requesting. Number one, set aside funds for rental assistance. Number two, ensure that BIPOC and queer communities are represented in the committee that will implement the ordinance. Number three, the committee implementing the ordinance must have decision-making power, not just recommendation power. Number four, set aside funds from the ordinance to assist homeowners with maintaining their homes. And number five, enact the housing of a tenant protection ordinance and just cause to address the needs of tenants, disproportionate numbers of whom are Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Building a Spokane with affordable housing for all requires tenant protections and requires centering the voices and expertise of Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities. Due to policies like racial redlining, BIPOC communities are underrepresented as homeowners. Rules that come out of the committee must address and resolve the inequities that past policies have created. Owning a house is not a choice that everyone will make, nor is it an option that is feasible for all. So tenant protections, including ending nocause evictions, ensure that those who are renting have the same stability as those who own homes. Incorporating these amendments would allow Spokane to create a comprehensive housing plan that includes the spectrum of housing opportunities for all residents. Thank you very much, and I now look forward to watching a little bit of the Grinch movie with my kids. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for sharing some time with us. Nicolette Ockletree, if you'd like to hit star three. After that is Tom Hormel, and then Michelle Gerardo. Nicolette, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Nicolette Ockletree again. I want to start by saying that I'm in favor of this ordinance, but only begrudgingly so as it has been amended to delay the levy. Again, the expenditure control form is blank on this ordinance. Where it says what alternative resources have been considered, there is nothing but blank space. And yet, we are now hearing you all consider an amended ordinance that delays this levy so that alternative funding sources can be investigated. That homework should have already been done. It feels manipulative and discouraging to see politics get in the way of people-centered policies at a time like this. This levy is likely to bring in just under $6 million, and anyone who's studied this problem even a little bit knows that $6 million isn't enough to provide affordable housing for all those who need it. So by all means, I support the effort to find additional funding sources for affordable housing, but not in lieu of the levy. Now, assuming the ordinance to impose the levy is passed, I urge everyone at every decision-making stage to keep in mind the goal, to build permanently affordable housing. What we don't want is a publicly funded effort with such a noble goal to line the pockets of private companies and nonprofits run by folks with quarter of a million-dollar salaries. What we don't want is to contribute to the gentrification and escalation of surrounding property values that make the neighborhoods even more unaffordable. There are properties that were built in Kendall Yards that received tax credits to build affordable housing, and, well, some of them started very affordable at around $200,000. If you look at the Spokane County property search, you'll see that many of these are selling it. Over $500,000 now, just 10 years later. These units are no longer affordable, and they're only contributing to the problem. And with so many renting and affordable housing waiting lists so long, it's not enough just to build more affordable housing. We need to make sure the housing that tenants are already in remains affordable too. Without strengthening tenant rights, building affordable housing is practically useless, and we'll continue to see the same discrimination and displacement go unchecked if we do not also pass just cause eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Tom Hormel to hit star three, followed by Michelle Gerardo. All right, Mr. Hormel, go ahead and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Tom Hormel, and I'm a Realtor in the area. I was raised in Spokane and moved to the area more than 40 years ago, and I have served many years on the Spokane County Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee. So I've seen this issue from multiple sides. First, I want to say the substitute amendment passed tonight says a lot to the citizens that you have not thought of. It says up till now, housing wasn't a priority, and that now you will look under the cushions to find the money to fund this housing crisis. I'm sad for this kind of ploy. As if housing truly matters, you should have been doing everything you could have for years to fix this mounting problem, including looking under the cushions years ago. I am in support of 1590, as we have been in a housing crisis for years. The question tonight has been asked, is this the right time? And it could be said no, with all that's going on. But this is the time that we're willing to do something, so let's do it. And let's do it right now and not wait till June while we look for other ways to fund this. Let's start and start now. I'm glad to see that homeownership is a component in this, as it seems every dollar spent in this area by cities, counties, and the federal government is spent on subsidized housing. And while that is a critical need, we can create more permanent affordable housing with homeownership as rents rise with the market, but a homeowner has a more fixed housing cost as only taxes raise the owner's monthly housing cost. I want to speak to subsidizing building homes for homeownership opportunities as government policies and fees can be as much as 35% of the cost of housing. We can increase the number of people in Spokane who are homeowners through a variety of measures, including subsidizing the city of Spokane application fees, building fees, hookup fees, and other fees with an attainable retail price at or below 60% of the median family income that those homes qualify for. 80% of most Americans' wealth is in the value of their home, and we need to continue to look for ways that help all attain this. I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last speaker from the public tonight is Michelle Gerardo, if you want to hit star three. Go ahead and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Council members, for allowing me the opportunity to share. I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity Spokane. I'm Michelle Gerardo. And our mission is bringing people together to build hope communities and, of course, homes. I urge you to support this housing levy. This levy can be an incredible opportunity to build strength, stability, and self-reliance, and the cost of home shouldn't be at all out of reach as it currently is. A tool that can provide down payment assistance or subsidy in achieving homeownership is exactly the kind of opportunity families need to gain the tools to empower themselves to break the generational cycle of poverty. Habitat has focused much of its work on rehabilitating blighted homes in West Central, East Central, and Hilliard. Efforts like Habitat's programs help to increase neighboring households' property values while actually creating a safe, healthy, decent, and affordable home for a partner family. The housing continuum is broad, but that doesn't mean it should be so complicated that we can't help to make this basic human right a reality. Housing has become the key component in every discussion we have. Safe, decent, and affordable housing is the key to creating thriving neighborhoods and eliminating displacement. At Habitat, we provide homeownership opportunities for low-to-moderate-income families that qualify based on need, ability to pay, and willingness to partner. And the application and partnership process is lengthy and focuses on preparing individuals and families to become successful homeowners. Even with these criteria, we've seen a 300% increase since March. That's at the shutdown. In return, Habitat builds and provides an affordable home and mortgage of no more than 30% of a household's income. We know that homeownership is the main generator of wealth in America. We also know that the so-called American dream has so far out of reach for too many for too long. The cost of building materials, the housing market, it's all outpriced the majority of buyers, and it's created a lack of access to credit and that for safe, decent, and affordable housing. We are all called to shelter in place. How do we do this when shelter isn't accessible? How do we right our wrongs of our past to truly make the American dream available for everyone? This is a tool to ensure our Black, Indigenous, and neighbors of color and everyone else can have access to a safe and affordable home and a future. Habitat has a vision of a world where everyone has a decent place to live. I can't imagine anyone on this council who could disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of public testimony. We had 34 people testify, and I just wanted to commend the quality of the testimony and people staying within the time limits and both being vulnerable in their own lives and also sharing the stories of other people. So I appreciate that. Now we have time for council commentary. And let me know, who wants to go first? All right, Councilmember Stratton.
Sure. It's all been said, I think everybody was very well spoken tonight. So thank you for taking the time to share your testimony with us. We need to do this, we need to do it sooner than later. I will support this, although I am sorry that we're looking at a delayed implementation. But I will support this, and I hope that we can all move forward and get moving on this, because the sooner the better. We've got to get something done for people that need some affordable state housing. Thanks.
I think I saw Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Owning a home changed my life and therefore the lives of my children. This would have not been possible without a government assistance program. That investment in me to help me purchase a home contributed to the person I am today. So here I am now, in a position to vote on the ordinance, to invest in people, and to invest in our community. No, this will not cure all the ills of housing, but it will provide an opportunity for those who want and need a place to live, attainable housing. What's also important to me is about the ordinance is the investment in the delivery of mental health services and behavioral health treatment, programs with overall objectives of helping to maintain housing stability. This is where we can come together to be the city we say we are, a city of choice and opportunity for everyone. To my fellow council members, if there was ever a need that we could all get behind, it's putting a roof over our brothers' and sisters' heads. The one cannot help the many, but the many can help the one. I will vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Other comments? All right. Okay, last call for other, okay, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you, Council President.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Obviously, a lot of, you know, really poignant, difficult testimony to listen to in some cases, some really good, I think, information was shared by folks. For me, what it -- what this boils down to, and I know there was the amendment, but I just, I don't think there's $6 million laying around for us to just find, and I think there'd be quite the discussion and debate, if there is, over what to do with that. So really, this is a tax increase to help with affordable housing. And I think at a different time, when we're not in the middle of this very likely to be a long economic downturn, we're not in the middle of a pandemic where, for better or worse, I tend to think worse, but for better or worse, government has essentially told people they can't work. They've taken their jobs away. And I think the absolute worst thing you can do on top of that is to then tell them that, and by the way, for the privilege of living in the city, we're going to charge you more. I just don't think that we should be doing that at a time when the economy is down, there's real big questions over employment, when or if people will get jobs back, and what the situation is going to look like at that point in time. So again, in a different time period, this actually could be something I would support. I think we need a huge increase in supply of housing, and if this would help with that and help to balance the markets, I would, in that situation, support it. So I do keep an open mind. But I think what we could be doing right now, and I think we've had some conversations, and to my frustration, most of them have been focused on just minor tweaks around the edges of the code. But I think if we really start to actually look at our code and start to talk about land use, and how we can change some of these standards to allow for the development of more housing, we would see a heck of a lot more housing going up in our community. And I think we can do it in a smart, careful way, but it's got to be done, something that we talk about doing. And so I think, to me, in the middle of an economic downturn and a pandemic, trying to ignite more development in our community that is going to help the market up and down, and reduce costs, and alleviate that compression effect, would be the absolute best thing we could be doing. And instead, most of those conversations tend to just focus on just tiny tweaks around the edges. And so I think that has to be the next thing that we take up. I fully expect this will pass tonight, and I hope to be able to lend a voice in terms of some of the backend planning on this, if it's desired, and I hope to offer that. But again, the thing that we could be doing immediately is starting to look and change the code to enable more units to get built throughout our community. You know, we just approved a couple of weeks ago an increase in the property tax. This is an increase in the sales tax. It's possible the state is going to come back with some increases in various taxes at that level, maybe even some new taxes. We don't really know, but it's going to be a pile-on for a lot of people that are not working right now and are just barely hanging on. And I recognize that there are a lot of people who are homeless, experiencing homelessness, and need support, and we can help. There's a lot of things that we can do, but to put an additional tax burden on the rest of the population isn't necessarily the right way to go about it at this point in time. So I'm a no vote tonight, but there are some good things that can come from 1590, some really good things I hope to work on. But as far as addressing our housing crisis, this is a blip. This is a tiny blip, when you consider the amount of units that this will build. So really, we need to get to work on looking at our zoning, and our code, and our land use policies, and start to make the appropriate changes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Any other comments from council members? All right, then I'm just going to use my Council President prerogative to have the last word, and then we'll do a roll call. So first, I just wanted to say, my first several years that I lived in Spokane in the '80s, I wasn't involved in city politics, and I was kind of oblivious to it, even though I was working downtown and helping young adults get jobs. I just wasn't involved. But since I've been back in 2004, I've been very interested in city government and how to improve things. And I've really been struck that there is almost an allergic reaction to do anything big and to get any big change. And I can only imagine, for those of you who testified and who are watching, who the solution seems so clear, that why doesn't this just happen? Why do we even have to go to this much effort? But I just have noticed that it's very difficult to create real forward progress deliberately. It's just, it's hard. There's a lot of reasons, and those of you who are on the city council and work for the city, and who have in the past, you understand all those reasons. It's not a great conspiracy, but it is challenging. So when I -- and it's not just the city government, it's state government. And remember, 1590 is only here because the legislature changed the law to allow it. And City of Spokane City Council had a big part in that, but I wanted to also honor Senator Andy Billick, and Representatives Marcus Ruchelli, and Representative Tim Ormsby for helping lead the way to even giving us this tool. Even at the state level, it's very hard to get any real change and do something different. There's just too many people at the local and the state level who are invested in the status quo the way it is, and so it's really challenging. So as I sit here and look back over all the years in Spokane I've advocated for more affordable housing and more housing justice, in the time I've been on council, to really come here tonight and be on the verge of doing something remarkable, it warms my heart, and yet there's so much more to do, as so many people eloquently stated. And it really is just the beginning of this new chapter, and there's more work to do. And how do we figure out how to do that? How do we take these new investments and do something different in real estate access and racial equity, and gender identity and sexual orientation equity and homeownership? And how do we empower people with mental health issues and who are living in poverty? How can they have the same housing that so many of us have? So there's so much work to do, but I really do want to celebrate all the people and this idea that our staff and stakeholders have been kicking around, and some of our new allies in the Realtors Association, of this idea that people who are living in housing should be able to own it, that we can actually flip that script, and that people, regardless of their race and level of income, can choose different neighborhoods and be homeowners. Although housing may be different, it may be smaller, it may be condos or townhouses or cooperatively owned apartments, people can own their home and have that stability. So this is really just the beginning of funding that. We also have 1406. We also have the legislation we sponsored that allows the tax increment financing to provide the same type of occupant-owned housing. But it's really amazing, and so I just do want to tip my hat to everyone and remind people of one of my favorite quotes from one of my favorite leaders, Bobby Kennedy, that "Some people see things as they are and ask why; some people imagine things that never were and ask why not." So my hat's off to all of you who asked why not, that got us here today, no matter what the path was. We have a long way to go together, and we're all going to be part of it. And with that, let's have a formal roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Tanyi. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. And special thanks to the sponsors of this, Councilmembers Stratton, Burke, and Wilkerson. It passes 6 to 1. Congratulations, Spokane. A great meeting, long one. Appreciate it, everyone. Our meeting is adjourned. We have another two Monday night meetings this month. Everyone, please take care, and take care of those around you. We're adjourned.